For all.
Okay, let's keep things on track, please. We have quite a few presentations to get through this evening. We're going to start with presentation number one, which is Pet. Excuse me, I will ask for decorum in this room, but you'll be asked to leave.
Uh, maybe you should tell him to leave. He's the one that's yelling at us. We didn't do anything. We were sitting here being peaceful, and he's the one that's being crazy.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to try this again. Item number one is a presentation, Pet at the Podium by Orange County Humane Society showcasing their pet adoption program. I think the... Our furry friend is waiting for us here? Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number two. It's a community spotlight in recognition of Joe Hammer and Sue Catlin for being named the 2025 Strawberry Ball King and Queen, Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year.
All right, this evening, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize two special individuals who have made a lasting mark in the Garden Grove community through their decades of service. At this time, I'd like to invite Joe Hammer and Sue Catlin, the 2025 Strawberry Ball King and Queen, to come forward. Every, every year, the city's H. Lewis Lake Senior Center hosts a strawberry ball to honor the new strawberry ball king and queen, and recognize them for their dedication to volunteerism with the local organizations. It is now the city's privilege to honor these two exceptional individuals, and we will begin with Joe Hammer. Joe was born in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and has called California his home for eighty years. As a longtime Garden Grove resident, Joe owned and operated a moving and storage business, California Relocation Services, Inc., before retiring. Joe has not only served as treasurer of the Garden Grove Rotary Club for many years, but was previously a board member of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. Whether it's organizing fundraisers, supporting local events, or lending a hand wherever it's needed, Joe is known for his kindness and dedication to the community. Next, we have Sue Catlin. Sue was born in Los Angeles, California, and has lived in Garden Grove for more than sixty years. She has devoted many of the, those years towards numerous community organizations, including volunteering twenty-six years with the Garden Grove Emblem Club, number 279, where she has held many leadership roles. Sue has also served as president of the Strawberry Festival Committee and president of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Women's Division. In 2006, she was named Garden Grove Woman of the Year. Sue's commitment to the well-being of the community is mirrored in the thousands of hours she dedicated to volunteering. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present a proclamation to Joe Hammer and Sue Catlin for their selection as the 2025 Garden Grove Strawberry Ball King and Queen. Congratulations.
The mayor asked if we would like to say a few words. I'm just going to say a very few. It's a great honor. I'm very happy to be called queen everywhere I go.
As you should.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank the council and the city of Garden Grove for the honor of being able to serve in the Strawberry Festival. It was a pleasure for me to do it, and a distinct honor. I'll never forget the experience, and I appreciate that very much. I moved my business here in nineteen ninety-five. We've been there thirty years, and it's the best town to do business in. And I, I've always appreciated the way things work here. So, thanks again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have another community spotlight, item number three, in recognition of the strawberry, or Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association for organizing the 2025 Garden Grove Strawberry Festival.
So, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize a devoted group of individuals who have played significant roles in continuing the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival's reputation as a premier community event. This time, we'd like to invite President Tony Lopez from the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association and the directors joining us tonight to please come up to the podium. The sixty-fifth Annual Garden Grove Strawberry Festival drew an estimated two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand visitors to Village Green Park over Memorial Day weekend, making a record-breaking four-day celebration of community, tradition, and strawberry-themed fun. This year's theme was celebrating cultural diversity, which ties in with the festival's commitment to inclusivity and community spirit. Festival goers enjoyed a wide array of free entertainment, delicious food, signature strawberry treats, games, rides, and family-friendly activities, all contributing to an unforgettable milestone year. The beloved event continues to honor its legacy of giving back with proceeds supporting local nonprofits and community initiatives. Each year, the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association gives more than a hundred thousand in grants to nonprofit organizations, scholarships to Garden Grove Unified School District students, complimentary experiences for two thousand special needs students on Special Kids Day, and transportation for G.G. USD marching bands participating in the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Parade. Furthermore, since nineteen fifty-eight, the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association has contributed over eight million dollars to charities, supporting groups like the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove, Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's Orange County, Thomas House Family Shelter, and many more. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association with a gift and appreciation and recognition of their tireless efforts in organizing the 2025 Garden Grove Strawberry Festival. Thank you.
Mayor, council, city staff. My name is Steve Sanders. I'm the current president for the Strawberry Festival. And we would like to thank you for recognizing the volunteers. Even though there's a few of us here, there's actually twenty-one directors and twenty-one associates. So, we have forty-two volunteers that put their time and efforts together to make a successful event in our community. We're still one of the few that do not charge to come onto the property. It's a community event, and we're very proud that for at least the last half dozen years, we were able to contribute at least a hundred thousand dollars back into the community. And each year, we try to increase that, although sometimes it's kind of hard to do that. But our goal is always to give back to the community, and thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you so much. Strawberry Festival was very successful this year. It seemed like it was packed every single day, and it's such a wonderful event that I know the Garden Grove community looks forward to every year, but so does it people from all over Southern California and beyond. So, well done, another year of success. Thank you so much. I think my colleague had a comment?
Yes, I do want to say thank you so much for your passion and dedication. I was there almost every day, and just see how the student, everybody really enjoy it, and just look at the amount of money that you gave back to our community. And not just that, during the time, Steve family actually make food for the volunteer, and that is something that people don't see. So, thank you so much. And then you also had the little one there to support the, you know, all day, selling the food. So, thank you for leaving the footsteps that have for people to follow. Thank you.
I would also like to give a shout out to my former Parks and Rec colleague Andrea, her daughter, who is the unsung hero of the Strawberry Festival, AKA the strawberry. She's in the strawberry suit, so I want to make sure she gets her acknowledgement. Thank you for being in the strawberry suit and bringing so many people joy.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a popular one, so I think everybody has something to say. Yes, go ahead.
It's all positive. I think, I can't say how much this community appreciates the efforts of this particular group. They, they go above and beyond, and it's not just a one-time volunteer for a short period right before. It's a whole year of, of planning and logistics and all this stuff. And I know Andrea, weren't you president last year?
A couple of years ago.
Couple of years, yeah, and, and her daughter, the strawberry, does a great job. It'd be nice, and, and I think Steve, you're this year, right? So, but the amount of effort that's put in, and it's all volunteer. They're just working for everyone, and, and all that money goes back to Garden Grove nonprofits. I think the list came out today, right? So, you can go on the Strawberry Festival website and look at all the community organizations that receive money from that event. And again, they don't charge. You, you go on for free. I mean, the, the rides cost money, and if you want to buy food or something, it's going to, but you can actually walk in for free with your kids, and that's very unusual in today's world. So, it's, it's kind of nice that we still continue that tradition here in Garden Grove. So, thank you, everybody involved, and those who are here and those who are watching on TV.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I too also have a chance to join the Festival Strawberry this year, and really, it's a very awesome event that I can see that the residents from all the city, not just Garden Grove, came and enjoyed with us. And my family and I really appreciate that. We are so proud of you. Thank you so much.
All right, with that, we will move on along to item number four. It's a community spotlight in recognition of the Eagle Scout Flagpole Installation Project at the Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail. We were just there earlier to see that.
All right, I swear this is the last time you hear me. And this does say lastly, but I just want to let the mayor know that the Humane Society has shown, so we'll have them come up after.
Fantastic. Thank you.
The Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize Boy Scout Rondo Tran for his Eagle Scout Service Project, the city's Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail. Rondo, a life scout from Boy Scouts of America Troop 222, is currently working towards achieving the Eagle Scout rank. As part of the Eagle Scout requirements, Rondo was tasked with planning and leading a community service project that would benefit the public, and he chose to honor Garden Grove veterans. Rondo contacted the city's Economic Development and Housing Department and proposed the installation of a twenty-five-foot United States flagpole at the Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail. Working closely with the city's Public Works Department, Rondo oversaw the installation of the flagpole next to the city's Medal of Honor Commemorative Plaque, which honors three Medal of Honor recipients from Garden Grove. Not only did Rondo fully fund this project through fundraising efforts, but he also plans to use the remaining funds to further enhance the space for the community to enjoy. Rondo's leadership and initiative embody the spirit of service and the pride that the Eagle Scout rank represents. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Rondo Tran with a certificate and memo, memento of recognition for his Eagle Scout project at the Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Trail. The city of Garden Grove thanks him for his service and looks forward to congratulating him on achieving his Eagle Scout rank.
It's a family effort.
Say something.
Hello, I just want to thank the city of Garden Grove for giving me this, for giving me this opportunity. I also saw on the stand, I really want to thank out, I want to shout out the city workers I saw. I saw Mike up there. You know, this wouldn't have been possible without him. So, again, I just want to say thank you to everyone who made this possible.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to jump back up to item number one, which is Pet at the Podium by Orange County Humane Society showcasing their pet adoption program.
Good evening, city council and mayor and all of Garden Grove. Today for Pet at the Podium, we have Maddie. She is a female Husky Shepherd mix. She was found May ninth on Springdale and Chapman, running just loose, taking herself for a walk. Today, we are going to talk a little bit about her personality, and she is up for adoption. And I'll give it off to Holly. She'll tell you a little bit about those adoption process.
Thank you. I remember everyone from last time. Thank you for having us here again. This is Maddie. As the animal control officer said, she was found running actually with another female dog. And she and the other female get along very great. They're inseparable. We, one was able to get a bath today, so the other one was unable, but we've got the clean one. And she's very sweet with everyone. She's a little nervous. She got carsick on the way over here. But she is just lovely and would make a great pet for anyone. The adoption process is pretty simple. You have to submit proof of residency or your lease, allowing you to have pets where it states that you are allowed. There's an application that needs to be approved, and basically, once you're approved, you get a free spay. Well, not free, the adoption fee, but a spay, microchip, up-to-date vaccines, a vet visit, and a wellness check. That's all included in adoption, and you get a new best friend. She's very, very sweet. Very sweet. She is nine months old. They, they found her on May ninth, and she is still a baby. She's not too wild for a puppy. No, she's good. She's pretty calm, especially, you know, for her breed. She's a little bit calmer. I'd like everybody, yes, please come say hello. Come say hello. She's just a little scared.
She's beautiful. Now, um, can you share with the community where they would find her on the OC Humane website? Or what's the best channel of, to get to her?
The best would be to go to OC Humane Society's webpage. There is a tab available that says Available Pets, and then you can search cats or dogs, and you can put in your zip code and how far you're willing to search for these pets.
I think we have a, yeah. I think we may have found her a home. Well, that's honestly the point of this. We wanted to give deeper exposure and be able to show our residents the beautiful pets and animals that we have at OC Humane, and how many of them are up for adoption. So, hopefully, we can find some, some new forever homes for these beautiful animals. Thank you for being here today.
You're welcome, and I do have a quick update.
Please.
Lenny, that was with me last time, the small Chihuahua, he has been adopted. And he's in a great home now. So, we're hoping the same for Maddie.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Okay, if any, we, we're going to be moving on to other business, so if anybody would like, this is your, this is your moment to exit stage left or right. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move into oral communication. Or do we, yes. First up will be Raquel Soto.
Hi, thank you for having me. I am a property owner, I'm sorry, a business owner and a property manager at two different properties very close together. And I've been here before complaining about a riverbed and transients and drug addicts coming up and down the riverbed. Thank you very much. You guys have installed a fence. It has cut down a lot of traffic. The traffic does still continue, and I was told by somebody that you would, the fence would be extended to a certain area. It's a small fence that has been put up. Like I said, it has been a significant decrease of activity, but I just wanted to ask that it continue to be built. But thank you. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you for the action, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clara?
What, do I start? Okay. Council members, I want to start by saying how deeply disappointed I am in every single one of you. I acknowledge you've done some good in our city, but in this moment, it's not enough. Right now, more than ever, we need you to stand up and fight for all of your people. That includes every single person who lives in Garden Grove regardless of immigration status. You've said that you are just a charter city and that your hands are tied, that federal law is paramount, and you can only act locally. You've told us to redirect our efforts to those with more power. But the truth is, there is more you can do right here. The question is, will you? Here are concrete steps you can take, and I hope that you actually write these down. Publicly reaffirm non-cooperation policies with ICE. Pass a city resolution declaring Garden Grove a safe, welcoming city. Fund legal defense programs for residents targeted by ICE. Provide know-your-rights trainings with community groups. Require public reporting when ICE operates in our city. Other charter cities have done these things. The limitation isn't the law, it's the will. Councilmember Joe, you said the people hold the power, and that if we're unhappy, we can vote you out. That's exactly why we're here. We are the reason you sit behind that podium, every single one of you. We will hold accountable. You tell us not to live in fear or to be hysterical. It is not hysteria when a parent wakes up wondering if it's their last day with their child. It's not drama when a family is torn apart in broad daylight, or when a child is too scared to return to school. That fear is very real, and to dismiss it is a privilege. And as an immigrant yourself, Joe, you should know better. Yes, you've done good for this city, but when people are under attack, it's not good enough that you're doing nothing now. Leadership means standing front and center when it's hard. You say your power is limited, but your responsibility is not. When democracy is on the line, every single elected representative, regardless of position or jurisdiction, has a moral obligation to fight for the right of the people. Our community is hurt and angry, and we will not stay silent. We will speak up to every elected official at every level. We will continue to apply pressure, demand action, and remind you, we, the people, will not stop fighting for injustice.
Thank you. Glenda Galvani Garcia?
Hello, honorable members of the Garden Grove City Council. My name is Glenda Galván García. I'm a mom, author, small business owner, and Garden Grove resident for the past twenty years. This past May was truly an honor to be asked to participate in the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Parade under the theme "Celebrating Cultural Diversity." But following that celebration, a troubling question came to my mind. Are we truly honoring diversity when one of our core values is actively being contradicted? I see people of color, regardless of their status, being detained without warrants by masked agents. How is that celebrating diversity? I studied Juca studies in college where I learned about the Mexican repatriation, an ugly chapter in U.S. history that saw two million people, sixty percent of whom were U.S. citizens, racially profiled, rounded up, and sent to Mexico. I once believed such injustice could never happen again, but today, that fear is sadly realized. A council member kindly offered me their card at the parade, encouraging me to reach out if I needed anything. So, I'm reaching out now. We need a plan to protect our immigrant community so that masked ICE agents cannot continue to seize people on our streets without warrants. It is unconscionable. My child attends school in our district, and I applaud the school district for creating a welcoming, affirming environment where the word illegal is considered a slur, and it's not tolerated. Making schools a true safe haven for students, but what about their parents? Are they safe when they're shopping at Home Depot, working at a car wash, or simply leaving their home? Let's stop pretending that this is about public safety. The majority of those detained are not violent criminals. Seventy-one percent of people in ICE detention have no criminal convictions. These aggressive raids have taken an economic toll. One study shows that the raids in Oxnard led to three to seven billion in crop losses and caused produce prices to rise five to twelve percent. But these numbers are not just abstract. They reflect families ripped apart, economies destabilized, and communities living in fear. This is not justice. This is draconian. Private prisons and surveillance rooms are seeing record revenues as detention beds overflow and enforcement intensifies. But we can do better, and we must do better. So, I'm asking that we take these steps to strengthen local protections for ICE enforcement, adopt or expand sanctuary, safe-city policies, ensure safe reporting practices for emergencies so parents don't fear deportation when calling police or seeking healthcare, investing in know-your-rights campaigns, and lastly, supporting community-based solutions like alternatives to detention. Council members, we must align our actions with the values that we claim to celebrate. If we truly believe in diversity, inclusion, and human dignity, then let's prove it with real compassion and justice. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize if I don't pronounce this name correctly. Do we need to pause? I think our timer isn't working. Do we need to pause for a second? In the interest of time, might be advisable to keep moving and I believe our city manager can keep the time while we're processing that. Next up is, I believe it's Pasha Mazbooti?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Fine, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I just wanted to thank the Garden Grove Police Department. They've been supporting our business for as long as I've been alive. The reason I'm here today is a couple of business problems that we've had that we haven't been able to address. We haven't been able to get ahold of anyone really. I believe it is your councilmember district. It's on Hasbro Street. Two problems. Number one, the trash collection with Republic, the contract. I would say about 40%, and we did eventually get ahold of one person, but 40% of our pickups were overcharged. We looked at the photos, all the photos were questionable in the words of one of the members of this city council. And the other 60%, the other 60% was overages, but that 40%, at least half of them were just completely false. For a period of time, they were charging us for the wrong property. And they keep charging us overages until the tune of like thousands of dollars just in the past month. We haven't been able to talk to them, anyone we talked to, they turn us to somebody else or they say they don't know. So the suggestion was to attend one of these meetings and bring this concern up. The other issue that I had that we wanted to bring up was we were being cited for graffiti to the tune of $1,000 at least. This has been a problem with transients for years that we've had. Tagging up the property and it's on us as a business owner to fix that problem and we're happy to do so because we want the city of Garden Grove to look nice. It is our property after all. And we're being cited from the city isn't really a supportive thing to us. It's like getting stabbed from one side and then instead of the city supporting us, the gentleman shows up at the property, one of the citation officers, and writes a citation for $1,000. Just my school tuition is $200,000, so $1,000 is a lot of money for my family. And that's not supportive. And this gentleman's done this a couple of times. If you like the name, I can give it to you. So essentially, I wanted to see what the council is able to do to support the business owners that are actually really trying to make this city a better place. And this is my family's, I've grown up in this city and I don't feel supported right now as a business owner and as part of my family. And it's a lot of money. And that's all I really had to say.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, thank you everyone.
I have your information, I'll make sure we pass it along.
Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Joseph Scott?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out today. I've been a resident of Orange County my whole life. I've lived in Garden Grove as a homeowner now since 2011. I'm currently living, I believe, in the 6th District over off of, it's a gated community off of Lewis called Gardenia. For the past two years, we've been living there. I've moved there with my wife and my three-year-old son, who was two at the time, and so, or I guess one at the time. And the home that's behind us to the right is a sober living home. This is a sober living home that's in the direct center of our gated community. I feel like in talking to my HOA, it becomes a argument of their rights versus our rights. And they have broke countless laws, the rules, I guess, of the HOA. The problem is, is that this, the home is 12916 Lotus Street. My home is 12925 Dahlia Street. It is a constant inflow and outflow of patients, whatever you want to call them, residents. Every four to five weeks, there's new people. Our HOA has no idea who these people are. We have no idea who these people are. They don't give us any sort of, this is who they are, this is anything. So there's, there's this constant new people that don't respect our community. We've had issues with trash, we've had issues with parking, but the main one that we're having is them smoking weed outdoors. Their home is two doors away from our public park and our, our public's, sorry, the playground where the kids play. Constantly, kids are like, what is this smell? You can smell it anywhere in our community. I know that marijuana is legal in California. With that said, it has been a complete nuisance for myself and the other neighbors in the neighborhood. We have, I have tried to call national things to find out even if they're legal. Our HOA doesn't even know if they're operating legally. I've been told that they came to city council and asked for a short-term rental permit and were denied. I have no idea why they would need that if they were operating legally. I've tried to call state and national organizations, no one will give me information. And again, it's, at 8 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, I'm in the backyard playing with my son and I have to take him inside because it smells like, you know, a Bob Marley concert, right? And his bedroom faces this backyard and he can see them back there smoking bongs and smoking joints and he's asking me questions like, what is that? I don't, I shouldn't have to have my son, who's three, deal with this stuff. What people do on their own time is one thing, but it has been something that has been caught, I mean, hundreds of photos have been submitted to the HOA, countless emails, probably 50 from just myself alone plus the other residents, and nothing's being done. And it's just at a point where we may move because of this, which is the worst part. As a homeowner, the person that's benefiting from this is the homeowner there. He's making thousands of dollars profit off of this situation where the only people that are suffering is everyone in the community and no one wants this there. And again, it's, I think if they were abiding by the rules and acting, then they would, they would, they would be okay. But it's just, again, it's really frustrating that nothing is being done.
Thank you, sir, I'm sorry, your time is up. I have your information, I'll pass it on, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Tim Steed.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Honorable City Council. My name is Tim Steed and I'm the Assistant General Manager at the Orange County Employees Association. OCEA represents 18,000 workers over 27 different public agencies in Orange County. Our union was founded in 1937 in Santa Ana, California for the purpose of advancing the welfare and quality of life for public employees and their families. Workers in the city of Garden Grove have been part of the OCEA family for almost all of those 88 years and we've stood together in that proud tradition and following that mission. Over the decades, our union has fought for every single right, benefit, and protection that our contracts offer. Things like healthcare, job protection, safety standards, pensions, and so much more. Most importantly, we fought to have a voice so we can stand together and fight for what's important. In exchange for our public service, we demanded respect, dignity on the job, and a chance to share in the success that we helped build because that's what a strong community is all about. Here in 2025, 88 years after our founding, we stand with the 88 so workers and their families who comprise the Garden Grove Employee League. Our mission remains the same, advance the welfare and quality of life for public servants in Orange County. On Friday, the union and the city are scheduled to enter into mediation to break the impasse that we're currently at. We hope the city will recognize the valuable contributions of these workers and seek an agreement. We're a lot closer than it appears and we absolutely wish to reach an agreement at the end of this week. In our eight decades of representing workers here in Orange County, a lot has changed, but we know a lot has remained the same. But what will never change is our steadfast commitment to public servants and the communities that they serve. Thank you.
All right. Since I do have quite a few cards, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I did last time and I'm gonna queue you guys up three at a time if that's okay. So we'll have Courtney Cook up next, followed by Amara Tan Chung, and then Victor.
Hi, everyone. First, I want to say thanks to the union and union members for being here. I'm just glad to see worker solidarity. And I also just want to thank the Garden Grove Police Department. It seems like that's what's required to have you guys listen. So I want to make sure that we're all operating from the same understanding as well. Someone else said earlier, KTLA reported that 71% of people in ICE detention right now have no criminal convictions. Of the 29% that do, 93% of them are not violent or property charges, they're traffic or other violations. Hundreds of asylum seekers are being arrested each week at the Santa Ana Immigration Court. Asylum seekers, I just want to make that clear to everybody. Most people are afraid to show up in court and are technically in hiding. Whether you help the community or not, this administration will target you for something. But during your next election campaign, you will not be able to say you stood up for immigrants because we all know you have not and you have left all the labor to the community, students, or neighboring cities while standing in the way of resources that we could use to feed residents or keep them in their homes. When your homeless needs rates go up this year, we will make sure that you mention that this failure to act when we have asked for help to keep families off the streets. Not just passive housing costs, but directly impacted by the city. We won't need to remind people that their elected officials did not show up for them or their neighbors or friends while they had to turn to neighboring cities for help. We will remind people that you hid behind your heritage and your ancestors out of fear when all of us present are standing up for ourselves more than the city is. To put yourselves at the center, as someone said last council meeting a month ago, I want to ask you, what are you in the center of? You're standing in the center between communities and far-right, frankly neo-Nazis who are showing up at other council meetings, thank God, not here today, who threaten other cities. So you're sitting in the center of normal people and military occupation. Standing in the center is a radical position against your voters. We've had a month to get to know each other and help each other out since the last city council meeting. Like someone said last time, even if you do nothing, community will form and remember who helped them. One council member also said, there's no need to be dramatic. I'm wondering what circumstances, is it acceptable to be dramatic? Speaking or even screaming at the city council seems like a relatively calm reaction to me. Thank you.
Amara?
Sin Dua, Honorable City Council Members. I am Amara Tan Chung, Garden Grove resident of District 5. Much of my family arrived at the US as refugees. Like everyone, they just want to work and have a safe environment for their children to grow up. They obey laws and pay taxes. I know that most immigrants, regardless of their legal status and ethnic background, do the same things. In fact, undocumented immigrants are less likely than citizens to commit crime according to many empirical studies, including a recent 2023 study by economists at Stanford University. The true unlawful things happening in our community are the ICE raids, violently abducting hard-working people, systemically targeting ethnic minorities and violating their right to due process. These troubling incidents have engendered terror and trepidation amongst immigrant families. I appeal to the city council to resist any illegal federal overreach of the current administration and protect and preserve the peace and harmony of our multi-ethnic, multicultural community. Gamal Nu.
Victor?
Thank you. My name is Victor. First, I want to thank local law enforcement, all first responders and military veterans for your service to this country. Thank you. I have nearly 40 years of waste cost-reduction management expertise and am very familiar with dealing with trash haulers and their greedy business practices. I am, I am a bean counter and management professional so I clearly see the mistakes the city of Garden Grove keeps making in regards to solid waste management. I stood here approximately a month ago and expressed my concerns and dissatisfaction to this very council mayor and city attorney and that the city has again failed to seek competitive lower trash rates for residents and businesses. Instead, the city of Garden Grove foolishly extended Republic Services' trash monopoly for many years without public approval. The city of Garden Grove has maintained and supported an exclusive monopoly franchise trash contract with Republic Services, doing business as Garden Grove disposal for painful 36 executive-long years. In exchange for the city giving Republic Services the exclusive monopoly, the city is currently receiving a 10% monthly kickback from Republic Services, gross billing receipts from residents and businesses. The businesses and residents of Garden Grove are paying above fair market rates for trash services, rates as high as 40% more than other cities. This 10% amount from Republic Services to the city amounts to tens of millions of dollars that the city receives for giving Republic Services the trash monopoly and ensures the city of Garden Grove does not put the city trash contract out to bid for lower competitive trash rates. Many Orange County cities currently have successful trash management with multiple trash haulers competing for the services. And those businesses, businesses and residents inherently pay much less than Garden Grove disposal charges. I might mention that the state of California does not require any city to have an exclusive franchise or monopoly with one trash hauler. That choice to keep out fair competition in, in the city of Garden Grove is the city of Garden Grove's choice. Yes, the city of Garden Grove can choose to give open competition for lower trash rates in Garden Grove, but the city apparently won't do it. The city of Garden Grove awarded Republic Services with another annual approximately 5% trash rate increase on residents and businesses that took effect just last month on July 1st. Then to add insult to injury for the residents and businesses of Garden Grove, the city's exclusive trash hauler, Republic Services, decided to go on strike for nearly two weeks and stopped Garden Grove Trash Services to support their Republic Services New Jersey trash hauler.
Sir, I'm very sorry, but your time is up. Three minutes, sorry, thank you.
Okay, I'd love to, if anyone wants to give me a minute or two of their time that they don't want to speak, I'll take it. If I can finish the closing, thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next will be Anthony Fish, then Corinza Shutman, and Michael Roka.
Council members? So my name is Anthony Fish and I am a teacher for the Garden Grove Unified School District. The school year just started this week and as a teacher, it is my responsibility to support my students educationally and mentally and emotionally. While I do everything I can in regards to teaching mathematics, which is my specialty, I want to say that I am very disappointed in the complete lack of action regarding these ICE raids. There's only so much that me and the whole Garden Grove Unified School District can do and the whole body, but you, you all have plenty of power. You can all do something. And the fact that there has been no plan, no action taken, I don't think there's any real excuse. The best time to act would have been months ago. The next best time to act is today. You understand? Even me, with far less power than any of you, was able to take 10 minutes to print out a PDF of your civil rights as an undocumented or documented immigrant. So if I, with far- So if I, with far less power than you do, was able to do this, and you, with your ability to pass laws, be able to enact new rules on our community and think about its members, could do nothing, I don't know what to say. You understand? As stated in the last council meeting, your silence is complicity. You are fine with what's going on. And if that is not true, prove me, everyone in this room and everyone in this community who is terrified every single day to leave their home wrong. Now, I rest my case. I expect action. Don't just think that this issue is going to go away. Understood? Don't think that people are going to just forget about it. We will show up at every single council meeting until something is done about these ICE raids, and people can feel just as safe as they did before. You can do better. If not, we will elect people who will do better. Take care.
Corinza Shutman?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. When the roads are smooth and the signs are clear, when the water flows freely and sewers run without issue, most people don't stop to think about the work behind the scenes. But the truth is, the city's crews and workers make it happen. They arrive before dawn, lay asphalt under the rising sun. They climb ladders to replace worn street signs and crawl through storm drains to clear debris before a single raindrop falls. They work through summer heat, heavy rains, and even in the middle of the night when emergencies strike. Tonight, GGLE workers come together to send a simple message: Respect the crew that works for you. That message resonates beyond one department. It reaches every corner of this city from every office and worksite. Every employee wants to know their efforts are seen, their commitment valued, and their work truly matters. GGCEA members recently ratified their contract, but ratification does not equal satisfaction. The concerns that brought GGLE to impasse remain real and urgent for employees across multiple bargain units citywide. With mediation scheduled for this Friday, we look to you, the mayor and council members, as our partners in leadership. Many of you express support for the workforce. Now is the time to show it publicly and visibly. We urge you to direct the city manager to ensure that the city's negotiations team comes to the mediation table on Friday with a clear message of support and a genuine commitment to resolving this impasse. Garden Grove has the resources to invest in this workforce. The question is whether it chooses to do so. This moment is about more than wages or benefits. It's about the culture we build, the respect we show, and the value we place on every single person who keeps this city alive and thriving. The workforce is watching, the community is watching, and we believe that together with clear information and shared commitment, you can help lead the way to solutions that respect the crew that works for you. Thank you.
Michael? There he is.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff. Allow me to think out loud. For those who don't know me, allow me to introduce myself. My name is Michael Rocha, and I'm proudly a member of the Public Works Street Department. And I'm also the president of the OCL Union. It has been my passion to dedicate my time and energy to Garden Grove for fifteen beautiful long years and to see this city flourish and fulfill its potential. We've seen people come and go, and basically right here, these are my guys. So, in a nutshell, today I would like to bring some understanding to the difference that we've come across throughout our meetings and overall reiterate our mission, our goals, our values for our city of Garden Grove by bringing facts about the hard-working people who make these goals possible. The Garden Grove Employees League is a union with eighty-eight members who are the backbone of this Public Works Department. Our team consists of positions such as heavy equipment operators, street maintenance workers, our sewer maintenance workers, our traffic signals technicians, our water production operators, water distribution, and park maintenance workers. These are actually some of the specialized jobs represented by GGLE, which keep Garden Grove running smoothly. Now, each day, about one hundred and seventy thousand residents of Garden Grove rely on the skillful accomplishments of these guys to ensure their water is running properly, to ensure their water is actually drinkable and safe, to ensure their sewage system works properly. It's easy for us to flush the toilet, it works. We turn on our water, it works. We have no idea where it's coming from until it hits the fan. So, but the men of this work hard to maintain our local parks green as well and safe for our families to enjoy. I don't know about you, I don't have a green thumb. So, to see these guys in our parks, to see what they do on a daily basis, it's, you know, it's a good thing, it's a value. So, as far as our street department goes, we take care of city streets, sidewalks, storm drains, flood control channels, and maintain about twenty-five thousand trees. We also do our daily cleanup of trash hazards and encampments left behind by the unhoused. While not all cities do this type of work in such great detail, because it takes a different set of workers to accomplish a well-polished job, the Garden Grove Street Department alone reconstructs roughly three hundred and sixteen miles of streets, alleys, and sidewalks by street mill grinding and asphalt paving, which ensures longevity to the street repair and quality that you can see. Our team actually takes pride in their work, they don't cut corners, and we don't pawn off any projects to competing contractors. Instead, we put in the long hours to ensure it's the same eyes and hands that see the entire project through the start to finish. Now, during this round of negotiations, we came to the table with thoughtful, respectful proposals and specific requests to meet our needs for our team. We feel we've been ignored, brushed off, and stonewalled. Because of these actions, we are now at an impasse, which requires a state mediator to step in and try to bring forward a fair deal on both parties. Last but not least, these men come to work every day, giving their all to the city of Garden Grove, and today, actually, Garden Grove has the opportunity to reciprocate and honor their hard work with respect and fairness for my guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, the next three, Kyle Mason, Jennifer L., and Brandon Nunez. Kyle?
Good evening, I'm Kyle Mason. First of all, I want to thank you guys for that fence that I've been screaming for for two years. We finally got most of it, but you're not done. You've got to put at least sixty feet more in. I've got pictures, you're going to see how tall that wall is, and if you don't put the fence up, you're going to have kids going down in that riverbed. And that was Raquel's office. By the way, she didn't bring up about the people smoking heroin in her laundry room. She lives right around the corner from me. I tell you what, I'm going to get a lawyer, and I'm going to be suing Garden Grove really soon. The next time I call the police and they don't show up, it's pretty upsetting, especially, I don't know what the problem is. I know it's not the police, it's the dispatch. Somebody needs to straighten them out, because the police do what they're told to do. Four forty-four AM, when you call somebody and you say there's somebody out there screaming like crazy, and nobody shows up, and you stand out there for over an hour and a half, what do you do? I'm going to take a ball bat, and I got a whole bunch of crew, and we're going to start taking care of things ourself, whether you guys like it or not. You better get rid of the guard company that's take care of the promenade on Brookhurst and Chapman. You better get rid of the security guard at the Walmart and put a new security guard in there. Actually, put a security guard in there, not somebody that just sits there and plays video games in his vehicle. I want to see some security guards around the area, and when the police are called, I want them to show up. If not, like I said, I'll get our wrecking crew, and we're going to start hitting the streets, and we're going to take care of it ourselves. I don't know how many people went down that riverbed. You guys put that fence up, there was fifteen, twenty people down there. You guys didn't finish it. You guys got to go another sixty feet further through the parking lot. I mean, I don't know what it takes. I mean, I got pictures of people smoking heroin and, well, like I said, she was right here. She didn't say she was afraid to, smoking heroin in her laundry room. How come the police don't come when we call them? Is it because they don't like me, or they want me to actually take care of it myself? I will. I don't know what else to say. Thank you for the fence, though. It did, it knocked about eighty percent. That's about it, eighty percent. There's still people going down there left and right. They've got to finish it. Thank you, guys.
Jennifer?
Hello, my name is Jennifer, and I'm here to speak once again about the immigration raids that have been happening in our backyard. Last time that we met was July eighth. There was over forty speakers supporting our undocumented community members, and there's been no action from the city council. I mentioned how disappointing it was to have people stolen off the street by masked men, no follow-up, you guys have no record, no recollection, no support for any of these families who have been taken from street corners vending flowers, just trying to make ends meet. It's ridiculous that you guys talk about how you receive federal funding and you're tied up by legalities, and you've left a lot of the work to the kids, the high school doing food drives. Doing an appearance at a food drive on a weekend isn't really doing much. I don't see you guys organizing your own food drives, supporting fundraising, anything. The City of Costa Mesa raised a hundred K, which is pennies to them, but at least they were willing to do anything for their own house, I mean, undocumented neighbors. And it's really sad to see that all of this labor has laid in the hands of our community members by doing fundraisers, basically begging for pennies online so that people can stay home from work, because if they go try to get work at Garden Grove Home Depot, they're going to get snatched up. There's been plenty of people taken in the City of Garden Grove, and I'm sure that there's records of the communication between ICE and the local police, but there's been no follow-up publicly, privately. I haven't heard a peep from anybody whose family was taken. It'd be nice to see some follow-up from our city council, who we fund with our tax dollars. Any type of training, support, there's a lot of low-cost solutions. You could provide even a basic training. Are your teachers equipped for if ICE shows up to take one of their kids? Are your businesses, are you guys equipped? Do you guys have any know-your-rights training? Have you guys talked about it? Is it just avoided? I really wish there was some sort of follow-up from you guys, any support, anything beyond just letting high schoolers do food drives and feeding the kids, which is great, but a lot of these people are single men that are looking for work and get snatched and targeted by ICE just because of how they look like. I really hope there's some follow-up from you guys, and I'm just going to keep yapping until my time's up, because why not? So anyways, I see that you guys spent four hundred K on gang units, so we're spending that money, but we can't spend a thousand dollars, five hundred dollars, anything for providing legal support or any type of support for these families. No food drives, no education. Is there a statement by the Garden Grove City School District? I do know that Walter's been doing a great job over there.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. I hope to have some follow-up, though. Thank you.
Brandon?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Brandon Nunez. I work for the City of Garden Grove Sanitation Department. I am a member of Garden Grove Employee League, GGLE, and a thirteen-year employee of this city. Every day, GGLE members do important jobs in our community, like taking out, like, taking care of the parks and recreation areas, graffiti removal, maintaining the city's drinking water infrastructure, paving streets, maintaining the sewer systems, maintaining and repairing sidewalks, installing street signs, and making sure traffic lights work. For about five months, GGLE and the city have been trying to agree on a new contract. This go-around negotiations have been tough and different from before. The city hired an outside lawyer to lead talks instead of using our own staff and took a harder stance against our ideas. GGLE came with fair proposals and reasons for them, hoping to work together. But each time we met, the city was not willing to talk about what our members need. Instead of cooperation, we got negativity and our needs dismissed. We brought signed petitions to the city council asking to respect, asking for respect and consideration. We tried to talk at meetings, outside meetings, and with elected officials, but were ignored. The city quickly gave us a last, best, and final offer before the old contract even ended, which is unusual for cities in Orange County. After that, negotiations reached a dead end. We will start mediation this Friday with a state mediator helping us to try to find an agreement. Does the city council care if the workers can't reach an agreement? Our demands remain the same: Respect the crew that works for you and take our needs seriously. Thank you.
All right, my next three are Terry Rains, Gloria Alvarado, and Julie Nguyen.
Hello, Terry Rains, Westminster. Your city attorney, police chief, mayor, and city manager are already aware of some of this, but I'm providing more info tonight. On June twenty-fourth, Mayor Pro Tem Joe DeVine appeared on a Vietnamese-language YouTube program hosted by Chris Van along with Westminster Planning Commission Vice Chair Tony Buie. I have provided you copies of the complaints filed with both cities, plus the transcript of the program roughly translated into English. This was a downright attack on Westminster Staff, Leadership, and Community Development Department that at times bordered on slander. DeVine was wearing his official Garden Grove branded jacket while making comments such as, "We criticize Westminster staff from the city manager down. The leadership of Westminster staff is too weak, including the city manager, Ms. Christine Corden. I want to fire her, fire her straight away, and call it a vote of no confidence. I am saying that Westminster is losing and will lose the lawsuit because of terrible leadership and personnel. Among them is Ms. Christine Corden, who I call for immediate dismissal. As for Ms. Christine Corden, she is a club of one, a secretary who was promoted after the previous city managers left their jobs. She has made the city deteriorate a lot and was covered for by Mrs. Kimberly Ho before. Now with the protection of the mayor, who is also protected by her cunning, no one dares to fire her. The civic leadership from the city manager down has to be dissolved." On July thirtieth, this is new, they appeared again. DeVine was wearing his official Garden Grove jacket, making comments such as, "I have reasons why I criticize Westminster. I could go back to Westminster and become mayor. Don't think I will sit in Garden Grove forever. I'm wearing the Garden Grove shirt, but I don't have to stay there. I'm not limited to Garden Grove. I will call on the people to vote for me, and I will be mayor of Westminster. Don't forget, everyone, I will move there, I'm not nice." Garden Grove and Westminster enjoy a mutually respectful relationship founded on principles of goodwill, cultural exchange, and shared progress, directly attributable in large part to the excellent working relationship between our city managers. DeVine's disparaging remarks about Westminster's leadership not only violate these principles, but also create an atmosphere of distrust and animosity. This could negatively impact future joint initiatives, economic partnerships, and community relations. Your city attorney opined DeVine was just stating his personal opinion. Then why was he wearing his official Garden Grove jacket and identifying constantly as your mayor pro tem? Would you have had Would you have had the same opinion if the roles were reversed and it was Lisa Kim attacked by a Westminster-elected official? Nah. Related, DeVine is a defendant in a nine-million-dollar breach of contract lawsuit case thirty-two thousand twenty-three zero-one-three-four-two-five-zero-eight with two of his defunct companies, Epic Development Group suspended by the French House Tax Board, and ABC Construction and Design terminated in two thousand seventeen, a year before contracting with the plaintiff. His contractor license, Kelly Star Construction, expires on the thirty-first. He did fire Mark Rosen as his attorney and went pro per August first. More to come. We need a good working relationship between our two cities, and we won't tolerate this. Thank you.
Hello, council members and mayor. Thank you so much for giving us the time to speak. And my name is Gloria Alvarado. I'm the executive director of the Orange County Labor Federation, proudly representing over two hundred and seventy thousand members in Orange County. And I am here because what we are asking is for respect and dignity for our workers. We just heard about an amazing strawberry festival. We just heard an amazing boy scout being recognized. And he took the time to honor the workers that made it happen. It is a sign for all of you to acknowledge the work that our workers do every day. I live in your neighboring city in Santa Ana, and guess what? I come to the parks in Garden Grove. You know why? Because they're beautiful. And I participate at all the events. And I mention this because for us, it is important that people around the community continue to have eyes, ears, support, and connection to the city. And this is only done through your workers. Respect the crew that works for you. We ask you to please guide your staff and let them know that good faith means coming in, willing to sit down, listen, and work together. It's called negotiations for a reason. We've been through this. Now we're in a different level. So we are asking for your guidance, your leadership. We are asking for you to come back and honor the work that is being done every day, to keep the community of Garden Grove thriving, their neighbors. And let me tell you, a lot of these workers live and enjoy the same facilities that we take care of. This is exactly why we are here. And I'm standing here on behalf of all the workers in Orange County to let you know that we are keeping an eye on what's happening and that we will not tolerate disrespect. An injury to one is an injury to all. And we ask you to please honor the work that the workers do, honor their commitment, honor their years of service, and acknowledge the fact that Garden Grove is thriving because of the commitment and the work that remembers you. Thank you so much.
Julie Nguyen?
Hi, my name is Julie Nguyen. I was here last time for the last city council meeting, and I spoke for my first time. Wasn't planning on speaking today, but I feel really inspired by my comrades. So I wanted to, you know, share some of my own thoughts, too. So back in March, when the beginning of ICE presence in California started to, when ICE was here in California in March, some alarms like went off in my head. And like, I knew I had to do something. So I had no clue how to take action. But I slowly started reaching out to friends, you know, friends that I've never talked to in high school, friends that I've maybe had a little bit of beef with, but that didn't matter anymore, you know? I reached out to families and I asked them like, hey, like, do you guys know what's happening? And do you know how to stay protected? And after a couple weeks, when ICE raids began to become more intense, I would have friends texting me in the morning, like, you know, I've just rolled out of bed, haven't brushed my teeth. Julie, I heard that there were ICE presence near where I work. Can I go to work today? And I said, you know what? I don't know. I really don't know, but I can offer a helping hand and I can go out and patrol for you. And every day, when I wake up, I would check my phone. It's always Julie. My mom is going out to work today, and I'm really scared for her, but I just, I don't know, I'm scared. And I would say, you know what? I can help. Let me go out and patrol. And this was all done before I got connected to like all the amazing Garden Grove residents who are building community here, before I got connected with organizations. I just knew that in my heart, this was the right thing to do. You guys now know what to do. You know, we've been telling you, oh, we need know-your-rights training, implement anything, something. You have the resources, you have the funding. But since the last meeting, there have been no actions taken. A couple weeks ago, some residents in Garden Grove, we met together just to have a community day, and we wrote on postcards to send to you guys. But did you guys also ignore that, too? Yeah, sorry, I didn't really have a plan, so that's all I'm gonna say today.
Thank you. Nicole Jaimez? Nicole Jaimez?
Is she here?
We'll move on to Nick Dibs, and we'll circle back to her if she's here.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm a teacher, educator, member of California Teachers Association retirees, and also a former member of California School Employees Association. First off, I want to stand in solidarity with Gloria and with Michael. We need fairness, we need justice and fairness and dignity and respect. So I've spoken out before in backing the union and so on. But I want to connect the dots, so to speak, in a number of ways. And that is injustice against one is injustice against all. The ICE raids, when you put it in historical perspective, and what's going on in the past and what's going on now, I want to bring to your attention the fact that this council, every December, passes a resolution on Human Rights Day proclaiming the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and stating, quote, "To be Human Rights Day in Garden Grove," Garden Grove declares that to be Human Rights Day in Garden Grove and encourages all citizens to continue a commitment to upholding freedom, democracy, and human rights in our community and around the globe. As has been said by others, including, I believe, Anthony Fisher, the teacher, and other people, silence is complicity. Well, we have a lot of silence going on, and I'm gonna try to break the barrier a little bit because we have corruption in Washington DC and we have corruption elsewhere. And the corruption in DC with the ICE raids is connected with the corruption going on in the genocide and the forced starvation in Gaza. It's all connected together. So we have to, as a council and as citizens of Garden Grove, contact our members of Congress, write letters, and stand up against the injustice going on. The equivalent of two atomic bombs that were dropped on Hiroshima and Nagasaki eighty years ago in August of nineteen forty-five has been dropped on Gaza, an area of about fifteen miles long and five miles deep with two-point-three million people being forced into starvation. So I'm gonna ask this council and the citizens of Garden Grove to contact your members of Congress and the president and voice your concerns about this, because this is not right. The only people who have a right to tell anybody to go home are the Native Americans. We're all immigrants, and only the Native Americans can tell people to go home. And that's the way it should be. And so the land was stolen from the Native Americans. It was stolen from Mexico. It was stolen in other countries around the world. And we create a million farmers out of work in Mexico under NAFTA, and we wonder why we have an immigration problem. So all of this is connected, and we have to speak out against injustice and not remain silent. And so I want to just quote Albert Einstein, who wrote in April of nineteen forty-eight, "When a real and final catastrophe should befall us in Palestine, the first responsible for it will be the British, and the second responsible for it, the terrorist organizations built up from among our own ranks." I'm not willing to see anybody associated with these misled people, meaning he was against the Zionist movement. So let's all stand together against injustice at home and abroad. Thank you.
Nicole Jaimez?
Are you done?
No.
Oh. All right. Hi, I'm Nicole Jaimez, and I'm just gonna go over, I guess, a little bit briefly, because I'm kind of in the middle. Like, I ain't steal anyone's land, but I also lived for, you know, about ten years in a little nowhere. And the only people that did the farming jobs and the ranching jobs, most of them were not here legally, right? They crossed, they come over here, they did all the farm work. And slowly, they're getting replaced with automation. But long story short, kind of what we're seeming to be missing, right? We do need to kind of make an opinion on where people stand, either for or against. But the bigger picture is people aren't going to work. How are they gonna pay rent? Right, if we're gonna go and we're gonna talk about homelessness, and if we have a whole population of people who don't want to go to work because they're afraid, they're gonna have bills. And what's gonna happen when they can't pay those bills? Those are the issues we need to look at. When our kids, we're putting them through school, through GUSD, which, oh, they're award-winning, which I'm sure nobody really looked up what that means, right? You have great attendance, you're in excellent school. But when you look at the actual scores for reading, which we need, we're in the fifty percent. So we're pushing kids out who can't read, and then we want to teach them their rights? Who's going to double-check that? Right, you have to be able to read, you have to be able to understand what you're reading. I have spent over, you know, ten years on my kids, learning the whole science of reading, visualizing processing. I could talk to you to death on reading, but I'm not here for that. It's really a multifaceted issue. It's not so much if our focus as a community is just to come up here and be like, "You didn't make a statement." I mean, just please just shut the fuck up. You don't need to make a statement. We know people are afraid to go to work. They're gonna need more than food and toilet paper. They're gonna have bills. And is our landlord gonna care? Probably not. And that makes a bigger issue for you guys, right? So I don't really give two fucks if you're, you get to stay here or you don't get to stay here. I mean, at the end of the day is if you have a whole bunch of people in the city who are afraid to go to work, then they're gonna need resources, more than toilet paper, more than food and diapers. You guys need to support all the city, not just partner with some, right? Because I'm sure we have a lot of McKinney-Bentsoh families or other families who would also have benefited from those resources. But we focused all on immigration, because that's the hot-ticket item right now. So don't segregate aid, focus on reading, understand what you read, and, you know, just help everybody. Don't segregate your help. Thank you for your time.
Morgan McKeegan?
Hi, my name is Morgan. I'm an educator and a Garden Grove resident, or I'm a teacher, not both. I just, I'm starting tomorrow. I, thank you. I want to support the people here with OCEA, and I hope you guys can come to an agreement. And I also want to lift up the workers in our community. It sounds like we hear a lot about labor. And a lot of that labor is done by people in unions and people who are undocumented, people who do not have the ability to work in a sector that has that wonderful representation that OCEA has. And I know it's more complicated than that. There are people working under the table, people, anyways, that's a whole other segment of immigration education. But I am really inspired by the young people in our community who have stood up for immigrants and families. And I'm inspired by Costa Mesa sponsoring a hundred thousand dollars to go to those families as direct aid. They are part of our community, workers, documented and undocumented, and people who are unhoused as well. So I hope you guys continue to, maybe not continue, but begin to show compassion for these groups of people, workers, documented, undocumented, and homeless and unhoused people. Because they are vulnerable, there are vulnerabilities that come with being in those groups. And the city can be a place that supports people who are working people or it can be a place that doesn't. And I know many undocumented people that are hard, hard workers. And a lot of times, I have friends that are undocumented and they own a house. And it's crazy to me because they pay a risk fee on that house, in addition to the mortgage. So they are doing double time. And I'm here without a house. Well, I rent. So amazing, but I wish they didn't have to do that. But just remember, they're doing double the labor, double the money it takes. So it's not easy being undocumented. And if you guys can do anything to support undocumented people, that would be greatly appreciated as a Garden Grove resident. Thank you.
Rodrigo Garraway, I believe? Oh, sorry. Hard to read it.
Bless you. Okay.
You're good.
All right. My name is Rodrigo Garraway. I live in Garden Grove. I've lived in Garden Grove for now almost fifteen years. I love living here. I came from Fresno County. And when I came here, I loved, I loved Garden Grove and what they had to offer. One of the things that I have noticed throughout the times that I've lived here, as a matter of fact, I live, and I believe, is District One. And I haven't gotten involved in politics because I tried to just live my life and be peaceful, pay, and do whatever I had to do. I live in, I believe, is District One. I live right off of, and it's kind of confusing sometimes because there's a lot of islands there. I live on Beach and Chapman, right on the corner, right next to the Home Depot there. Whose district is that? District One? Okay, District One. I've had gentlemen there have told me that ICE has been there. Okay? And it pains me because I've become to know those individuals there when I go by and I shop around there. I've noticed that that corner has been losing a lot of business as well. There's a lot of businesses that have closed, you know? Some of it might belong to Stanton. That little area right there is a little confusing. However, what I wanted to start with is this. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses, yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, the tempest tossed to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door. As Garden Grove, I hear that you have a wonderful strawberry festival. Instead of lifting that golden, that light, we offer that strawberry. I guarantee you, because I come from Fresno, that strawberries are picked, no matter what the temperature is, no matter what the weather is, an immigrant is gonna pick that. Tonight, when you go eat, you have your dinner, that food that you're gonna eat, an immigrant did it. They pay taxes. The young lady right now said they buy homes. They, some of them have businesses. They pay taxes. Taxation with representation. I know Garden Grove can do that. I know Garden Grove can represent. They need to be represented. They pay city taxes. And if they get deported, they have been taken away from that opportunity, and it's unconstitutional. Because we have stolen that money that they've put in to this city and this government. And if they get deported, they will never see that money be represented again. Not only that, but I see a lot of immigrants here. God forbid that they take your parents, they take your family members. Please, let's do something about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the pink cards I have for oral communication. I do have a handful of cards that I've held separately for the public hearing, which we will do in just a little bit. So is there anyone else wishing to speak on oral communication? Okay. At this time, we normally would move on to, we have a written communication. But before we do, if everyone could entertain just an idea that I have and something that I would really appreciate. that I would really appreciate. At the end of the last council meeting, uh, under Matters for Council, uh, my colleague, Ariana Arastegui, asked some questions of our city attorney. And I thought this would be a wise time to perhaps share and ask those questions again. I thought they were very clearly and poignantly stated by our city attorney. And I'd appreciate that being done again, if everybody would humor me for just a second. I know this is a little out of turn, but I think the timing is right. So, um, Councilwoman, if you would please ask away.
Yes. Hi, Omar. I know I'm your favorite person right now. I'm here to make your day. Um, at the, at the end of the previous council meeting, I wanted to make sure that I addressed some of the points that were brought up by our speakers. Um, I, I was sad that many of them didn't stay, um, till the end of the last meeting, but I see that some folks are still here. So I wanna make sure that we offer some clarification with regards to some of the points that were brought up, um, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, um, as to what laws apply to our city, uh, what is within the scope of our power, um, and how we can go forward, uh, should we want to, to enact any kind of action. So, uh, one of the first things that I would like to make sure that we clarify again is, Omar, could you please let us know what the distinction is between a general law city and a charter city, and which of these applies to the city of Garden Grove?
Okay. So the city of Garden Grove is a general law city, not a charter city. Uh, the difference between charter and general law is that a charter city has its own constitution, uh, adopted by its residents. And under state law, local, uh, matters of local concern are left to the, to the city that has a charter, um, to govern itself. General law cities are subject to the laws of the state of California. And so all our activities, everything we do complies with state law because we're a general law city. So we, you know, all our activities have to follow and comply with state law. Uh, so that's the difference.
So we've been asked to take action on a couple of items. Uh, it's been suggested to us by members of the community. Um, and I wanna make sure that we understand what is the difference in terms of what's been happening in other cities. Um, so we've seen different cities bring forth resolutions, and we've also seen them bring forth ordinances. To make sure that we all understand, could you please just tell us the distinction between a resolution and an ordinance?
A resolution is basically a statement of either policy or opinion, uh, adopted by the city council, or facts, um, adopted by the city council. An ordinance is actually a regulation that can be enforced. And the city's regulations and ordinances can be enforced as misdemeanors or by fines up to $1,000 per violation per day. Um, however, under state law, our ordinances do not apply to county, do not apply to the state, do not apply to the federal government. Um, in fact, the federal government, uh, rules apply across the nation, uh, to the extent that there are laws or rules that are not left to the state by the United States Constitution. Um, so when we were talking about this issue last time, I mentioned that, um, the federal, uh, federal officials and officers are not just coming to Garden Grove, they're coming to the state of California. And I mentioned that if the governor and the California, uh, Assembly or Senate cannot keep federal government officials out of California, I'd like to understand what jurisdiction you would have as a local government that doesn't have authority over the county or the state to basically dictate how federal officials can operate within the United States, basically, because we're still part of the United States.
Thank you, Omar. I remember at the last council meeting, it was suggested by a member of the community that we take action similar to the way the city of Huntington Park has taken action in that they, um, that they enacted a resolution with regards to masked officers. Um, and as we now understand, that's a policy directive. That would not be enforceable if we enacted a resolution to a similar, uh, vein. Uh, so it is my understanding that what we can provide is resolutions of policy in this, so far as our jurisdiction allows. Um, and with regards to any ordinances, we would be limited by both federal law, state law, and county law. Am I correct?
Well, we're governed by federal law, state law. Uh, the, between the county and the city, we have what the state case law says, intake governmental ability. So, uh, county law doesn't apply to the city, but our city laws don't apply to the county either. So if the county owns property in our city, they're exempt from our regulations. If we own property in county areas, on incorporate areas, then their laws wouldn't have jurisdiction over our property in those areas. We, we don't own, we're never gonna own property in county areas, but, uh, but the county does own property in the city, and they're exempt from our regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Omar. Um, you know, I, I bring this up because there's also been the question, uh, about the mask mandates, right? And we know that there's currently legislation that's working its way through the state legislature, uh, with regards to these issues. Um, and should this legislation pass, should legislation like S B, um, eight oh five, which also tackles mask mandates, um, should state-level legislation pass? Would our police officers be subject to that?
Yes. Uh, our police officers are subject to state law, and they do comply with state law, and that's part of their training, uh, in order to get their, uh, official police status.
And Omar, as a part of the, uh, current state legislation, uh, does our police department cooperate with ICE?
No, and the city council did adopt the resolution confirming that our police officers do not, uh, do any immigration enforcement. That is a federal, um, federal duty to do, not, not a local duty.
So it's my understanding that when it comes to any communications that our police department might have with ICE, um, that would be things like the, um, the courtesy calls. Um, but they're not, but is my, am I correct in that the federal government is not bound to give us courtesy calls?
No, they're not. And they used to, um, my understanding is that they stopped doing that.
And when we do receive courtesy calls, they're also not, if we do receive courtesy calls, we are not, they are not mandated to let us know if this is something that is happening ahead of time, that is currently happening, or that has already happened? Sorry, the wording of the question is weird.
Yeah.
But basically, when, when federal agents call us and give us a courtesy call, there's nothing that says, uh, that mandates those federal agents, uh, from letting us know that their operations are happening ahead of time, that they're happening as we speak, or that they have happened already?
No, nothing mandates to, for them to do that. They're not required to do that.
So in effect, if we were to at some point receive a courtesy call, there's nothing that would hold them to, to actually give us a, a warning ahead of time. We can't hold them to that.
Correct. You know, from what I understand, the, the few times that they did give us courtesy calls were pertaining to, um, to arrests on federal charges. And, you know, if we have, for example, C H P or some outside agency, um, enforcing a warrant in our city, they will give courtesy call in case, um, and there's a nine-one-one call. We are aware that there is another, uh, another agency operating in our jurisdiction.
Okay. But again, our police department does not cooperate with ICE?
We do not do any federal enforcement.
Thank you for, for clarifying that. And like every other city in the state of California, we're subject to state law that says we cannot cooperate with ICE. We, and we do not. So thank you for, thank you for clarifying that. Um, I also have some additional questions, um, with regards to if, if this body were to decide to put forth a resolution or an ordinance, um, is the public able to put forth a resolution for our consideration? Does that need to come from this body?
Um, the, the city council's policies and procedures are that the majority of the city council needs to agree to agendize an item.
Okay. So in order for us to put forth anything and to pass forth anything, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, it would require a majority of this elected body in order for that to take place?
Yes.
Okay. And that would just be to agendize the item to even entertain the conversation?
Correct.
And then we would need to continue and actually vote on the item?
Yes. I mean, individual council members can have their item be agendized, but it won't be for discussion. It has, it requires, under the council's policies and procedures requires a majority of the council to agree to agendize an item for action.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much, Omar. Um, and if there's anything else that I've missed, I, we can cover up, cover that later. But I did wanna make sure that, um, we're educating one another as much as possible. Um, and, you know, to address some of the other, some of their points that were brought up, um, you know, there was question with regards to follow-up and whether we're able to find out information about folks that have been taken from Garden Grove. Um, I do want you guys to know that there has been efforts to, to figure out if there's been folks from Garden Grove that have been taken. Um, and we've referred those questions to the folks that, that would know that, which are our congressional leaders. Um, and once those answers, you know, become available to them, um, I'm sure that they will let us know. You know, we're gonna continue inquiring. I know that I myself, within my capacity, will, will continue inquiring as to, um, our residents, uh, to find out any further information. But, um, as to our personal capacities, uh, to, to be able to, um, find out that information on our own, we are, we are limited by a few, um, federal levels, uh, of red tape. So, you know, we did try our best, and we have reached out to, to the office of Congressman Derek Tran, uh, to, to get us some more information and know that we're gonna, we're gonna continue following up. Um, thank you, Stephanie, for this time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, we can address this more under Matters for Council at the end of the meeting. I know we still have quite a bit of business to attend to, uh, one of which is written communication, item number five.
This evening, we do have a written communication, uh, a consideration of a written request from the city of Stanton for cosponsorship of the rental fees and permission to use the Showmobile outside of the city limits from September nineteenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And Jen Montanes is here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. On behalf of the city of Stanton, I'm presenting a written request for cosponsorship for the rental fees and authorization to use the city's Showmobile outside of Garden Grove city limits for the Saint Polycarp Catholic Church Annual Family Festival, scheduled for September nineteenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. This three-day event is a longstanding tradition in the Stanton community. It offers a fest- festive carnival atmosphere with rides, games, food booths, and a variety of live entertainment for families to enjoy. The Showmobile will serve as the main stage for these performances and activities. The request before you includes two parts. First, approval to waive the rental fees for the use of the Showmobile from nine AM on September the nineteenth through ten AM on September the twenty-second. Second, authorization of the Showmobile to be used outside of the Garden Grove city limits in accordance with the Showmobile's general use policies. The standard rental fee for the Showmobile is $350 per day for the total of $1,050 over the requested three-day period. This amount would be wa- uh, this amount would be waived as part of the city's cosponsorship. Staff's recommendation is that the city council approve the cosponsorship request and fee waiver, and authorize the use of the Showmobile outside of the city limits for the Saint Polycarp Family Festival. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the report. Colleagues, any questions or a motion? Sure.
Yeah, um, Mayor Chauver from Stanton actually emailed me and, uh, wanted to get permission to use the thing. And I said, "Well, you know, the council has to vote on that. I can't just waive a magic one, but I'd support it." Uh, so I think I forwarded it to Lisa or John, and so they agendized it here for us to, to vote on, on, on behalf. And, you know, this is a really great, I don't know if you've been to the church thing, they do it every year at the Catholic church, and they have this big carnival kind of thing. And, and technically, it's out of the city, but it's literally like right across the street from our city limits. So it's, it's, you know, and so, anyway, um, I think it's great for the community. There's a lot of Garden Grove residents who actually attend this church, and, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to do it.
Yes, I feel I want to make a motion or second on that. I go to this church since when I was little, and I go to this event every year. So, um, you are correct, a lot of Garden Grove residents go to that church. And so, um, I would like just to say the same thing, motion or second. Yeah.
Wonderful. Any other comments? Otherwise, we have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. With that, we are going to take a little break. We're gonna recess for a minute, let everybody stretch their legs. And I think we have a birthday to celebrate. I believe there is cake waiting for us as well. So we'll be back in a minute. All right, we will reconvene and move into successor agency. We could have a roll call, please.
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
President.
Member Ida Steggi?
Here.
Vice Chair Munyaton?
Here.
And Chair Cloppenstein?
Here. We held oral communication simultaneously with other legislative bodies. We'll move on to the consent calendar. I have one item, receive and file the minutes from July 8th. I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, that takes us to item 19. This is our public hearing.
Yes, this evening, we do have one public hearing, adoption of a resolution denying an appeal filed by Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, SAFER, and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve site plan number SP-158 2025. And we have Huang Li here to provide that report.
And we have Huang Li here to provide that report. Good evening, mayors and members of City Council. The item before you tonight is a request to conduct a public hearings to consider an appeal requesting that the City Council consider modifying the Planning Commission's decisions to approve site plan number SB-15A, that's 2025, for a new industrial building on the site located at 7441 Lincoln Avenue. As a public agency, the city is required to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA for short. The city reviews proposed development projects and determine whether CEQA apply on the projects, by projects basis. If CEQA applies, the city with a support technical consultants determine which level of CEQA compliance is required. Therefore, man's type of CEQA compliance. First, the city may decide that a project qualifies for one of the CEQA exemptions. If an exemption apply, the review process is concluded. If an exemption does not apply, the city prepares an initial study and determine whether a negative declarations, mitigated negative declarations, or an environmental impact report is required. Here, the Planning Commission's approved on exemptions for the project, proposed projects, which is the Class 32 infill development projects. To qualify for the Class 32 exemptions, projects must meet several criteria. First, it has to be consistent with the general plan destinations and zoning regulations. This has to be located within the city limits on the side of no more than five acres. The site must not have any known value as habitat for endangered, threatening, or rare species. Its approvals must not result in any significant traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality impacts. The site cannot, can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. And finally, no exception to the exemptions apply. When a CEQA determination is made by a non-elective decision-making body, such as the Planning Commission, CEQA permits an appeal of that determination to the City Council. Here, the Supporters Alliance of Environmental Responsibility, as known as SAFER, appealed to the Planning Commission's determinations that the projects qualify for the Class 32 exemptions. Instead, SAFER argue that an initial study must be prepared, and that's either the mitigated negative declarations or environmental impact report is required to address the project's alleged significant impacts. So as for the, as to the projects, the applicant filed a land use application for city approval of a site plan for a property located on the northwest corner of Lincoln Way and Western Avenue. The site is currently improved with an approximately 44,000-foot industrial building. The site plan approval would authorize the construction of a new 50,300-square-foot shell industrial building and associated site improvement. As detail explanation of the projects is included in the Planning Commission staff report that have been provided as an attachment to the city's city council memo. Project site plan elevation of the project are shown on the slide before you. In summary, the project consists of the following. The 50,300-square-foot building with a total of 52 parking spaces. The ground floor will include warehouse, live manufacturing area, and office spaces along with mezzanine for additional office spaces. The project is designed to comply with code requirements, setbacks, high parking and landscaping requirements. At the time of the applications, the applicant contend that the proposed projects is exempt under Class 32 infill developments projects. In support of these contentions, the applicant provide an environmental information form and an exemptions justification memo along with supporting technical studies. City staff concur that the Class 32 CEQA exemption apply and recommend that the Planning Commission approve the projects. The Planning Commission's held a duly noticed public hearing on June 5th, 2025. Prior to the meeting, SAFER sent a letter opposing the Class 32 exemption determinations. No other members of the public submitted letters or spoke in opposition of the projects at the public hearing. The Planning Commission voted 720 to adopt the resolutions determining that the projects was exempt from CEQA pursuant to the Class 32 exemptions, making certain findings and approving the request site plan and land use entitlements. On June, on June 23rd, 2025, city clerk received an appeal from SAFER. SAFER objects to the Planning Commission determinations and requests that the city require an initial study to be conducted and a CEQA document prepared to analyze and mitigate the project's environmental impacts. No additional supporting information or certifications for the appeal or is, request was provided by SAFER at the time. On August 6th, 2025, the city received a letter from SAFER with technical comments in support of its appeal while the meeting had already been noticed. The applicant was given a copy of the SAFER's letter and was able to provide written detailed technical responses prior to the meeting. The cities have reviewed and analyzed the SAFER letter and applicants' responses. Following this review, staff conclude that the Class 32 exemptions apply to the projects and it recommend to deny the appeal is unchanged. Staff would like to note that pursuant to the Garden Grove Municipal Code, on decision of the Planning Commission, are appealable to the City Council. However, the code provides that the purpose of the next appeal of a hearing body decision is to allow an applicant or an interest party of a land use actions who feels aggrieved by the decisions. SAFER did not articulate how or why it is an interest party when it's filed its appeal. In additions, a decision of a hearing body on the land use actions may be appealed by an individual. SAFER is a nonprofit corporation, not an individual. Therefore, SAFER lacks standing under the Garden Grove Municipal Code to appeal the Planning Commission's approval of the proposed projects. However, CEQA independently authorized any person or entity However, CEQA independently authorize any person or entity to appeal a determinations of a non-elected decision-making body, such as the planning commission to the agency elected decision-making body, such as the city council. Therefore, city council review and consideration for the appeal is limited to where the, the planning commission's determinations that the project is exempt from CEQA review under the class thirty-two exemptions was corrected, was correct. Therefore, staff recommend that the city council take the following actions. Open the public hearings, take the public testimony, and deny the appeal and upholding the planning commission decisions. This concludes staff report, and we are available for questions.
Thank you very much. At this time, colleagues, any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Yes, council member.
Just to be clear, we have a commercial slash industrial building that's getting leveled and a new commercial slash industrial building in its spot, same spot, basically.
That's correct.
Okay. There's no, are, is there any problems with city services being delivered to that location with water, sewer, trash, anything that?
No, sir. That you're aware of? No, sir. Public works and all other cities departments have reviewed the projects and all the services will be supplied to the sites.
And even though they have a lack of standing under Garden Grove ordinances because of the other state things we were appealing it here, have they given any justification for their appeal to you since? I mean, is there any kind of like why they want to do this, or?
On August 8th, they just providing a technical comments letter to the city. They identify, they identify several technical issues on the, on the CEQA documents. We have the applicant along with CEQA expert here to answer those question. And in fact, the applicant also received the letter and they also prepare a letter of response like earlier today. And I believe that the city clerk had distributed that letter to you. No problem. Yes.
Huang, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
When did the planning commission vote on this?
June 5th.
June 5th? And do you know whose district this project is in?
George, um, council, District One.
Okay, so I don't have any in, of interest. It's not in my district. Thank you.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. First steps, I will call on the representative for the appellant. I believe that is Haley Uno?
Uno.
Uno? Yes, okay, very good. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Haley Uno from Lozo Jury LLP. I am speaking today on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. SAFER respectfully requests that the city council grant SAFER's appeal of the planning commission's approval of the infill exemption prepared for site plan number SP-158 2025. The city council should instead require the city to prepare a mitigated negative declaration or environmental impact report. Further review of the project under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, is required because there is substantial evidence that the project will have significant adverse health impacts related to air quality. Therefore, the project does not qualify for the exemption on its face, and the unusual circumstances exception to the exemption applies. Air quality expert and principal environmental engineer, Patrick Sutton from Baseline Environmental Consulting, concluded that the project would significantly impact air quality. The off-road construction equipment used for the project would emit diesel particulate matter, or DPM, a known human carcinogen. These DPM emissions pose an adverse health risk to nearby sensitive receptors, including family residences located immediately adjacent to and north of the project site. The city's air quality consultant, Urban Crossroads, prepared a health risk assessment, or HRA, to evaluate the health impacts of the project's construction DPM emissions on these sensitive receptors. Urban found that these emissions would not exceed the CEQA cancer risk threshold of ten per million for the South Coast Air Quality Management District. However, Mr. Sutton identified critical flaws in Urban's approach and analysis in the HRA. For example, the HRA substantially underestimated the DPM inhalation dose and the DPM emission rate from the construction equipment. To address these errors, Mr. Sutton prepared a new HRA. He calculated that the project's DPM emissions from the construction equipment would expose nearby sensitive receptors to a cancer risk of forty-eight point two per million, far exceeding the air district's significance threshold of ten per million. Thus, there is substantial evidence that the project will significantly have affect air quality impacts. These impacts, as well as the project's close proximity to sensitive receptors, create an unusual circumstance precluding the city's reliance on the exemption. So for the reasons I have discussed here and in SAFER's written comments, SAFER again respectfully requests that the city council grant SAFER's appeal and require preparation of an MND or EIR. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Do we have representatives from the applicant or developer here? If you'd like to come up and speak, please. Henry?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, staff, honorable council members. My name is Henry Hong. I'm speaking for the applicant. Our development manager, CEQA consultants, and attorney are also present here to address the faulty basis of SAFER's claim, as well as answer any questions you may have. I'm just going to spend a few minutes to provide some context around the project. And since staff did a great job in the presentation, I'll just be pretty brief. As staff mentioned, the project site is currently improved with industrial slash office building totaling a little less than forty-four thousand square feet, built in the eighties. The building is dated and does not meet the demands of today's tenants. Specifically, the heavy office buildout and the low clearance heights of each floor is not desirable, desirable by industrial users. Additionally, the, since the pandemic, demand for office users has decreased significantly. And those people who are still leasing office are primarily focused on larger office properties that can deliver walkable retail, food and beverage, wellness amenities, and other amenities that this current building just cannot provide. And speaking with leasing brokers that specialize in leasing comparable properties in Orange County, it was estimated that lease up with the current building may take upwards of two years and is uncertain. So we believe that redeveloping the current site into a modern industrial building would not only benefit the property owner, but also achieve, play a part in achieving Garden Grove's role to ensure high-quality industrial areas, as stated in Garden Grove's general plan. Of the approximately five hundred seventy-one industrial buildings in Garden Grove, only nine were constructed in the last twenty years. What that means is Garden Grove industrial base is facing functional obsolescence either today or in the near future. Our project's going to be a class A industrial building that will be competitive and attracting a new dynamic business to Garden Grove. Also, the majority of Garden Grove's industrial building inventory consists of buildings under twenty thousand square feet. What that means is if you're a local business trying to grow and you've reached that threshold, you're going to have very limited option to grow within the city, and our, our modern industrial building is going to provide that option to grow within the city. We often get asked what type of users occupy these modern industrial buildings. Nowadays, many people associate new industrial buildings and warehouses with high-traffic, high-intensity, Amazon last mile delivery stations, which I think a lot of people don't realize is those Amazon buildings are highly specialized and significantly larger than most industrial buildings, and significantly larger than what we're proposing here. To provide examples of more common uses, I looked up leases of industrial buildings between forty and sixty thousand square feet in the Orange County area. And those uses include distributor of kitchen and bath products in Anaheim, distributor of furniture, home goods, and sporting goods in Brea, an e-commerce brand accelerated providing e-commerce agency services to brands in Anaheim, and the Tao showroom warehouse in Orange. So as you can see, these examples are moderate industrial uses. And the businesses that are representative of this type of user clearly contribute to the local economy in terms of jobs in the Garden Grove with very little detrimental impacts. And another thing to note is that these types of businesses who value newer construction, higher image buildings typically are not just bringing warehouse jobs, but also higher-paying jobs such as digital marketing, advertising, logistics, and technology, and more. So with that, I just want to thank you for your consideration of the project. Hopefully, the context around it is helpful. And the rest of my team, I will turn over to address any of the specific unsubstantiated claims by SAFER.
Thank you. Can he? Okay.
Sure. Should we vote this up in your favor tonight? What is your build-out time?
I think we have to still go through plant check with the city, so depending on that timeframe, assuming the market forces aren't going to change, we can finish the building upon plant check completion, you know, within twelve months or so. So I would say, you know, estimate six months for plant check and another twelve months for construction.
So say two years out and you're adequately capitalized so that?
Yes.
Can move forward expeditiously?
Yes. There's no debt on the property.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, and happy birthday. So first of all, my name is Elisa Pastor. I'm land use counsel for the project. I want to thank staff for all of their help. That was a great presentation. They've been really great to work with on this process, and we appreciate that. So we submitted a letter earlier today that rebuts the contentions in the SAFER letter. I'm happy to answer any questions about that letter. We have our technical experts here if you want any technical answers, but I'm going to keep it short because it is in our letter. First of all, the project does qualify for, as a class thirty-two exemption. If this is an infill project and the staff discussed, it's consistent with the general plan, it's under five acres, and it's in a fully urbanized area. The project also will not have any significant impacts on the environment, despite what you're sorry, what you're hearing from SAFER today. So SAFER's contention is basically that the air quality study was somehow wrong. But in fact, the air quality study that they submitted is not based on substantial evidence. It overestimates hugely many of the emissions. If you would like to hear about the exposure rates, which are highly inflated, Michael is here and he can tell you about that. And it's basically just trying to leverage this project, you know, for some other reason, which is unstated. They also claim that it's not, that it does not meet the exemptions, exceptions to the exemption. And basically what they're saying is it's somehow not like the other properties in this class, but in fact, it is, right? This is an industrial property that is already developed with industrial uses. It is nearby other industrial properties, which are also already developed with industrial uses. And all of those properties are nearby residential uses. So any contention that it is somehow not like other uses in its class is incorrect. This appeal is without merit. SAFER only showed up at the very, very last minute at the planning commission. They didn't actually show up to the planning commission. They just submitted a very generalized letter. It's a frivolous appeal that is nothing more than an attempt to leverage this project. We hope that you will see through that and not reward this type of bad behavior. And we urge you to deny the appeal, and again, we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yes, just one quick question. You want, may want to answer one of your persons on your team. Just quickly, when they're talking about emissions, what emissions are they talking about?
So specifically, they're talking about the construction emissions that happen with the equipment during the construction timeline.
Which may be, say, a year's time, within a year's time. So the emissions issue goes away after construction, right? It's not an ongoing issue.
That is correct. It's only construction. It's not an operations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have another card for Annie Gallagher. Is she also a part of the developer presentation? Okay, please, yeah.
Hi, I'm Annie Gallagher. I'm a development manager on the project and just here to answer any questions as well. Just wanted to fill out a card so you knew I had the opportunity to answer anything.
Very good. Thank you. All right, seeing no further questions at this time, I'd ask the appellant if they have any rebuttal.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the pink cards I have. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will open this up to questions, dialogue, or action. Yes, council member.
So I guess this is for staff. I get there's a, a short-term concern during the construction period for maybe some of the trucks go bringing stuff in and out, which you're going to have that with any construction project. But are there any, and maybe this is for the city attorney, I don't know. But are there any mitigating state laws, local ordinances, conditions of approval in the approved project by the planning commission that would mitigate noise, pollution, you know, that type of stuff during the construction period?
Let me answer that. So this is just a typical development, redevelopment, really, in the city. And so no specific condition of approval regarding mitigation was required. We already have all the regulations in our code or state law. So that's why the exemption from CEQA applied.
I know in previous issues like this at the planning commission, they would put in the conditions of approval that they would use water trucks to like spray down any kind of?
That's already an AQMD requirement.
So that's a law that's already a mitigating factor in this project then, correct?
Yeah, so.
All right.
So all, all construction activity has to comply either way, AQMD, regional water board, our municipal code. If you recall, we amended our code to change the hours of construction operation.
That's what I was just going to bring up, yeah.
Again, we already have provisions in our code that deal with construction. So to the extent these are issues pertaining to construction, they're already covered by different laws.
Okay. Well, I think you answered all my questions, and even to the noise question, you know, we, we had, I think it was just at the very last meeting, we changed our nose or ordinance, so those construction hours are actually compacted, so they're not as late at night for communities that are trying to sleep and whatnot, so. With that being said, I'll make a motion, but I'll leave it up to.
Have a couple of questions?
I'll make the motion to deny.
Yes, yes.
Council member or mayor pro temp?
Mayor, you have a question?
No, I was gonna.
Oh, okay, yeah, just a quick one. Maybe Mr. Hong, you could come back? I just, couple of questions. It's more background. So you have built this kind of projects before?
Yes. We specialize in smaller scale commercial industrial projects. We currently have another similar-sized building under construction in Ontario. And we have three other projects under entitlement or under permitting.
And so you're familiar with the thirty-two exemption and?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and, and so this project's not going to be very much different from other projects you run?
No, very typical. I think, yeah, nothing extraordinary that I could think of.
Okay, yeah, because I want to, you, you can't make sure and rule out all litigations, but at least, you know, you're in a residential area and you may trigger lawsuits and your lawyers here, and I want you guys to cover all your bases. You've built out before, you've had this exemption, you know what you're doing, and I'm, I'm confident that you're going to be successful. And we, we want to support your success, because I'm not for urban blight, and I hear you. We, we need to build more new kind of spaces like this, and especially after COVID, it's, it's very welcoming. So thank you for coming into our city and developing, but keep in mind that there's, there's some real concerns, and if you can mitigate any of that. And also, hire locally. We, we have a lot of workers here in and around our area, so whatever you can employ in our city, we would appreciate that also.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a motion. Any other questions, or I'm looking for a second? I have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote. Motion received. Seven yes votes. Okay, that moves us on to items for consideration. I know for the interest of time, we do want a staff report on item twenty-four. And but items twenty-three, twenty-three, would everyone be in agreement with waiving staff reports on those items? Yes. Okay, I have a collective yes. So we will move on to item twenty without a staff report.
No staff report?
Nope. For free, Bill. For free, Bill. Nicely done, Bill. Thank you for your service. All right, item 20.
So item 20 is a word of contract to Merchants Building Maintenance LLC to provide custodial services at various city facilities.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or I'm assuming a motion?
I'll move it and I'll say that's really cheap for three years.
Yes.
You got a second there.
Whoever got this contract deserves kudos.
I have a motion in a second, call for the vote, please. Item 21.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
I'm really hearing things along, sorry.
Item 21, authorization for the issuance of a purchase order to Allen's Lawn and Garden Center, Inc. for the purchase of small equipment and small equipment parts as needed basis.
Colleagues, a motion? I have a motion in a second, okay. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 22.
Item 22 is authorization for the issuance of a purchase order to Coastline Equipment for the purchase of two new John Deere backhoes.
Great, a motion?
I'll move.
Motion in a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And item 23.
Item 23, authorization for the issuance of a purchase order to O'Leary Ford for purchases of five police patrol vehicles, two police administration vehicles, and one gang unit vehicle.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, that moves us on to item 24.
Item 24 is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amended chapters 8.02 of the municipal code to prohibit outdoor advertising of alcoholic beverages near schools, parks, and areas frequented by children. Ordinance entitled and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove amending chapter 8.02 of Title 8 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, revising its title and adding section 8.020, excuse me, 8.020.020 for the purpose of restricting outdoor advertising of alcoholic beverages near schools, parks, and other areas frequented by children. City Attorney Sandoval will provide that report.
Mayor members, so the City Council before you is an ordinance to introduce. If you recall, this is a matter that Councilmember Munyaton raised after the mural that was painted across the school on Lamson. And the purpose of the ordinance is simply to require or prohibit advertising alcohol near areas where children normally congregate. That would include within 500 feet of a school, playground, recreation center, or facility, childcare center, library, or if any of these facilities are more than 500 feet, then the display cannot face or be seen from those areas. So that's really what the ordinance is doing. We renamed the chapter so that this new section fits within that chapter and that's all we're doing. So I'll be happy to give an even longer staff report or additional explanation or I can just answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, City Attorney Sandoval. Appreciate the work on this, councilman? Yes?
If I may, I just want to thank my fellow council members for supporting this ordinance. This item is near and dear to my heart. I want to assure that our students and our children in the community are safe and are supported in our city. And with that being said, I would like to be the first to start this motion. So yeah, let's vote.
I will very proudly and very happily second this motion, yesi. Yesenia, Councilmember Munyaton, respectfully. I'm so incredibly excited that Councilmember Munyaton introduced this ordinance before us. It's something that's so important for us and I'm really glad that we have an item that I think so many of us agree with. Thank you so much, Councilmember Munyaton, for bringing us all together with regards to this item and highlighting something that's very important for us in order to make sure that our kids are safe. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and I'm excited to see all the other ordinances that you're going to bring before us.
A motion in a second?
Can I have a question?
Yeah, sure.
To Oma, is this thing, what happened to like billboard?
Yes, it applies to billboards, it applies to any advertising that would be posted in any of the areas that are being prohibited.
Even though actually billboard, New Freeway is not belong to us? I mean...
Yeah, it would apply, it would apply to billboards as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Not really a question, but just a quick comment. I just want to say thank to Yesenia for coming up with this because this is very important, but a lot of time we don't pay attention to that. And so that's why it's very important to have a board with all the council member here. His council would have a different background, different expertise to be able to look at things like this. So just want to say thank you. That was it.
Yes.
And I'd like to echo Councilman Tran's comments. Thank you, Councilmember Munyaton. It was, I think, you know, I probably would have passed this sign and not even, you know, focused. So it was good that you could bring that focus to this council and provide some effective change in our city that will be positive for future generations. So, good job.
We are the city of youth and ambition after all, so I think this fits right in with that. So, okay, we have a motion in a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, with that, we move into ordinances presented for second reading and we have several of them. Item 25.
Item 25 is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2966 entitled and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving zoning amendment A-042-2025A, a text amendment to chapter 9.54 accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units of Title IX land use of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to comply with state law.
Colleagues, do I have a motion? These are second readings. Motion in a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 26.
Item 26 is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2967 entitled and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving zoning amendment A-042-2025B, a text amendment to portions of chapter 9.04, 9.08, 9.12, 9.16, 9.18, 9.32, and 9.60 of Title IX of the City of Garden Grove Municipal Code to confirm, to conform to state and federal law and city policies to replace subjective language and to make clarifications and typographical corrections.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Motion in a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And item 27.
Item 27, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2968 entitled and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove amending section 8.47.060 of chapter 8.47 of Title 8 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to permitted construction hours.
Great, colleagues? Motion in a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
With that, that takes us to matters. We have item 28, an update on the fiscal year 2425 graffiti abatement program.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We've made it to the last item on the agenda, so I promise to keep it brief, get us all out of here. Tonight I have the privilege of providing you with an update on the fiscal year 2425 graffiti abatement program and outlining the enhanced service levels implemented through the amended contract with GPC, otherwise known as graffiti protective coatings. To provide you with a little bit of background, from July 24th to July, sorry, June 24th to July 23rd of 2024, a 30-day pilot program was implemented to expand graffiti removal services and address graffiti concerns throughout the community. Expanded service levels included the addition of a third graffiti removal truck, seven-day weekly service, and an increased scope of work to allow for removal of graffiti on private property facing public streets. Following the, excuse me, following the success of the pilot program, the City Council approved an amended agreement with GPC that provided for an increase in baseline services to maintain three operating trucks providing service seven days a week and removal of graffiti found in the public right-of-way and private property through November 30th of 2024. In comparison, previous service levels only allowed for two trucks on a stagger schedule with one truck providing service six days a week and another truck providing service three days a week. Both trucks were solely addressing public right-of-way incidents. During the subsequent months of August to November of 2024, the city's Public Works Department and City Manager's Office continued to monitor graffiti incidents and responses throughout the city. As a result of increased service levels, GPC was able to address 930 incidents of graffiti found on private property and 3,918 incidents on public property. This demonstrated a notable increase compared to the zero incidents of graffiti proactively removed from private property and the 4,349 incidents of graffiti removed from public property during the same time period in 2023, just one year prior. With the continuation of the graffiti abatement program in fiscal year 2425, the Public Works team was able to appropriately adjust service levels to allow for two trucks to provide service six days a week throughout the remainder of fiscal year 2425. This increase in service levels resulted in a total of 14,723 work orders completed in fiscal year 2425 compared to the 12,155 work orders completed in fiscal year 2324. This reflected a 21.5% increase in graffiti removal overall. Additionally, expanded staffing and coverage allowed the city to not only proactively address chronic problem areas such as a 22 freeway and pierced pedestrian bridge, but also support the Garden Grove Police Department dispatch with emergency cleanups and complete sidewalk and bus bench pressure washing. During fiscal year 2425, the code enforcement team also continued to work in coordination with the Public Works Department when addressing private property graffiti incidents. Of the 2,677 total code enforcement cases opened, 428 were related to graffiti on private property. Overall, the fiscal year 2425 graffiti abatement program demonstrated the value of sustained investment in proactive rapid response services. With expanded staffing, greater flexibility, and measurable results, the program significantly improved the city's cleanliness, responsiveness, and cross-departmental efficiency. These measurable results are incorporated into the graffiti abatement monthly reports that are available at the city's website at www.ggcity.org/pw/graffiti-abatement. And the most recent reports for the months of April and May of 2025 are attached as well. There's no financial impact and it is recommended that the City Council receive and file this report. And staff will continue to monitor program performance and explore long-term service level adjustments as needed to maintain effective citywide graffiti abatement. And prior to closing, I'd like to give just some special kudos where it's due to the Public Works Department, specifically Raul Leva and Anna Neal for overseeing this contract. And I'd also like to remind residents and community members that should they ever see any graffiti incidents, they have the ability to report those issues via our city's website and our mobile app. That concludes this report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Sean, we appreciate it. Obviously, we know that graffiti is a serious issue. We've had these conversations at length as a, as a council. We've made it a priority and I think having these extended hours and the extended help to bolster has really proven itself. I think we definitely have seen a downturn in the graffiti. It's a cat and mouse game, we all know that, and so there's always work to be done. Very grateful to the Public Works team and everyone that has a hand in making this happen to beautify our community and to know that this is something that remains a priority. I appreciate the transparency, that the residents can see what actual data is there and what work is being done. That's putting our money where our mouth is and so I appreciate that, that residents can go on our city website to gain that knowledge and information as well as please utilize the hotline number as well as our app. The app is fantastic and things get done very quickly when you use that app. I think we've all experienced that and I know we've had feedback from residents here in the community that appreciate that service as well. So thank you for the report and hopefully we can keep at it. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a question. You know, we had a public speaker here earlier who was upset, a business owner who said he keeps getting slapped with thousand-dollar fines. And I was always under the impression that when the city was dealing with private property owners, asking them to remove, they gave them a certain amount of time, like 30 days or 20 days to remove it or face the fine. Are we just given fines now or are we still allowing people to take it down on their own?
Anna Mayor, members of the City Council, this was a code enforcement activity and I do, you are correct, there are several notices provided to the property owner relating to giving them time to respond. I don't know what the circumstances surrounded this particular case where ultimately an admin site is issued, but we'll be certainly circling back with that individual and try to work out a solution. At the end of the day, I don't know if the property and where the graffiti incident had occurred is contained solely within their property and it's not visible from the public street, but at the end of the day, we want to be as responsive as we can.
And generally, but generally speaking, we would send them a letter and any, any particular person that might have graffiti on their property and say, hey, you know, the City of Garden Grove respectfully requests that you remove this graffiti by this date. And, you know, you would generally expect one or two of those letters to go out before a fine would be issued, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted that to be clarified.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the report. All right, with that, we will move on to council members. We'll start with District 6.
Hi, everyone. As I said earlier, you are all welcome for my being born. Thank you for joining me and celebrating my birthday. I just wanted to start it off with something light. You know, we had a lot of really great things happen within our community while we were on our, our little vacation. So I want to make sure I acknowledge that some great things that happened in the community. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Sabroso Mexican Kitchen for their wonderful reopening. As we know that they've been going through some renovations, they've expanded, they now have a patio, a full bar. We got to celebrate them on August 4th at their ribbon cutting with the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. It was also my mom's birthday that day, so we enjoyed a beautiful and delicious birthday brunch. Oh, sorry, Matt, I didn't tell you it was my mom's birthday. We were all sitting together. But it was delicious and I'm so glad that we have Sabroso Mexican Kitchen in our community. They're a wonderful cornerstone and wonderful ambassadors for Garden Grove and they do wonderful things for our city as a whole, not just for District 6 where they, where they do reside. So congratulations to Paloma and Sam and their dad and all their family. We had a great time. We also celebrated National Night Out on August 5th. It was a wonderful event with Garden Grove Police Department, Orange County Fire Authority. We had the best time. I want to thank all of our community partners for being there and for sharing their resources with our community and our officers for putting on some really great display. Shout out to the stars of the night, Rocky, Cody, you're my favorite canines. You rock. We also had the District 6 Walk and Talk last Saturday. I want to thank all the folks that came out and our city staff as well. I'm glad that we got to have some feet on the ground to take a look at some of the things that we see on Harbor Boulevard every day. It's such a heavily, heavily visited street and it's good for us to, to get an idea of where we could do some improvements, especially because we want to make sure that, that this very transited street artery gets some TLC, especially now that we have our wonderful street improvements happening on Harbor and Garden Grove Boulevard. And as I, I would like to remind residents to please be patient as construction is underway and give yourself some extra time going to and from your destination as construction unfolds. And if you have any questions about the construction project, just, you know, reach out, happy to answer them to the best of my ability. Also, congratulations to the wonderful students at Santiago for their CSF, their honor society, their key club, and their sports teams. They held a wonderful food drive and distribution that was open to all of the folks at their school. So extremely proud of the, the work that the students have been putting forth and wanting to make sure that they're, they're helping everyone in their community. So I want to make sure I give these students the kudos that they deserve. They continuously, consistently impress. As well, a huge thanks to our friends at Garden Grove Unified School District. They also held a community food drive and the, the resources that were collected there will be distributed to schools that are a part of a special community schools program that they have. There were so many members of the community that came out and I just want to... There were so many members of the community that came out, and I just want to make sure that we acknowledge some of those folks, like United Across Borders, who, who came in. And they came in with a big old truck of, of supplies and food, and this is going to go help so many families across so many schools in GGUSD. So, thank you, GGUSD, for all that you do. I also, you know, want to make sure that I take a moment to acknowledge that we had a lot of folks here that came from, from our community with regards to their concerns over ICE and immigration. And I just want to remind folks that, you know, here at, in, in our forum, in our wonderful city council, we're kind of like the first closest point of contact that a lot of people have with government. And this forum, this dais, whether we are the most appropriate forum or not, this is the most accessible forum to a lot of our neighbors, our friends, our residents. And when folks come here and they express their, their views, whether we agree with them or not, you know, it's their First Amendment rights to, to use this forum. So I always try to encourage folks to, to become civically engaged, to, to participate in their local community, to ask questions, because that's how we have discussion, to find answers and to find solutions. So I never want to discourage folks from, you know, coming and, and asking those questions, because even if we're not the ones that have the immediate answer, you know, maybe there's a way that we can help them find those answers. And, you know, it also takes, it also takes bravery for people to come and share their opinions, especially when it's young people. So I want to thank all the folks that, that, you know, came and, and shared. And, and, you know, to my colleagues as well, you know, their previous meeting, Councilmember Mungiton also, you know, mentioned, you know, we're open to having conversations with all of you guys about, about the work that we do, whether it's on this dais or whether it's outside of this dais. Our community as a whole needs, needs healing, right? So, you know, we welcome you guys to, to have conversations with us and ask us questions. We, we want to make sure that we work together for the betterment of our entire community, because when, when one part of our community is hurting, that inevitably hurts other parts of our community. And we need to be able to, to work together, have a shared sympathy and empathy for one another, and find a way to, to move forward. I also would like to thank the folks that came here from the Garden Grove Employees League and OCEA. You know, we have mediation coming up this Friday, so I hope that, you know, we're going to see some, some good faith efforts to, to make sure that we reach a resolution. And we will be asking, you know, staff to, to brief us as soon as possible with regards to what goes on in that process. We want to make sure that this, this, this entire process goes through as expeditiously as possible so that, you know, we can, we can all find a conclusion to this and continue doing the work that we need to do in the city. And that's all for me.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone has had a great summer. First, I want to welcome back our Garden Grove Unified School District students back to school. As a, as a GGUSD parent and PTA member, I know these are very exciting times for our youth and for our families, and, and I know it's been a long night, so I'll keep my comments brief. Last month, District Five residents joined me for a D5 Coffee Meet and Greet with OC Board of Supervisor Vicente Sermiento at Hester Basin Park. Residents enjoyed a cup of coffee with some pastries and connected with their neighbors and chatted with us about local issues, local issues, community updates, and how we can continue making District Five stronger together. I want to thank Chief Alfarah for joining us and helping and answer some of our questions from the community. I also want to thank OC Public Works and OC Parks for helping make, make this event a success. Lastly, I want to thank Sean from the City's Manager's Office and John from Community Services for preparing talking points and information about the upcoming Hester Park updates. I want to take a moment to recognize the members of the Garden Grove Employee League, our Public Works team, who are here today. These are people who work day in and day out to keep our city safe, clean, and functioning. I understand that negotiations have gone on far too long. They are now, they're asking for economic stability to keep pace with the rising cost of living and recognizes their essential role. And I believe these are things any worker should ask for. While I know labor negotiations can be challenging, I also believe that we do our best work when we approach them with mutual respect and a shared commitment to finding solutions. I want to encourage our bargaining teams on both sides to return to the table, work together in good faith, and reach for an agreement that recognizes the values of public work employees and support the ability to keep providing the high-quality services our residents depend on. Our employee association, our employees are one of the city's greatest assets, and I believe we can find common ground that honors their contributions and serves the best interest of our community. For those that came out and spoke in regards to the concern in the immigrant community, again, I want to thank you. I do not need to repeat where I stand on this issue. Again, if my colleagues want to meet with either me or Ariana on, on this issue, what we can do as a city, our doors are always open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues. Yes, a little bit of a long meeting, and I'm going to make it a little longer. Not a lot longer, but I feel like I'm the lightning rod tonight. My name was mentioned twice, so I was struck by lightning twice. And I do need to respond a little bit, just in the order as the subjects came up. And my favorite time at our meetings is spotlights. I love the spotlight. So, congratulations to everyone who got the recognition. But also, I love the oral communications, because that's when we hear from you. That's citizen activism, including our, some of our very known individuals who come regularly. But I got to push back against you a little bit tonight, because nobody is telling anybody to go home here. Nobody is saying that. Not even the Native Americans, who themselves and their ancestors were migrants to this continent. So we're all going to stay put here. We're all going to stay put. And just because we spend time deliberating doesn't mean we're not actively working on these issues, each and every one of us, proactively. And I thank you, my colleagues. You've done your homework. You've worked with the city attorney. We've gotten the message out loud and clear. We are very actively working on every single issue that has come before us in the last meetings and in the last three years I've been on this council, including tonight. And if we have to stay here till 10 o'clock, we're going to stay here till 10 o'clock. I am not for fear. I said that last time. The fear is very real. And I'm going to say this time, the fear is very raw, and we heard it tonight. And I thank you for the very courageous people who comes and speak to these issues. But as I said last time, we're not going to let fear paralyze us. And least of all, I'm not going to be a fear monger. Now, everybody in this room that was here tonight, I don't think any one of you has been to an ICE detention center, Immigration and Customs Enforcement. I was there last week in Adelanto, inside the ICE detention center. And I will tell you right now, nobody wants to be there. It's cold, and it's inhumane. So what Nick Dips is appealing to is our humanity, and I thank you for that. It's inhumane. I was inside. I had a visit, the son of a family member, not my own, a mother, whose son got picked up. And I got some statistic tonight. I, I heard, well, you know what? Seventy percent or more of the people there are not criminals, don't have a criminal record. Well, you know what? I believe that even if they do have a criminal record, as long as they're not felons, they're not hardcore criminals, they're not repeated offenders, habitual offenders, and not felons who's been convicted and on the run, then I'm for second chances and rehabilitation, because this country is a country of second chances. I came here, and I was allowed to stay here, and I'm still here thanks to America's bleeding hearts that gave me and my family and everybody else second chances. I've done my research. I went on ACLU website, and I looked up "Know Your Rights." It's there. We don't have to spend a dime to get that information. And I'm telling people, it's on ACLU's website. Just Google "Know Your Rights," and it sends several languages, actually a dozen, including Vietnamese and Spanish, Chinese, and Korean. It's all there. Not that we're not going to spend any money on this cost, but we have to defend our budget. We have federal grants. We have federal money that is used for all our citizens in this town. And I, and my fellow council member was elected to represent everybody in this city, not just the people who came, spoke tonight, not just to the people who are anti-ICE. We represent everybody. A lot of them are not here, but they know the law. And if we do not comply with the federal mandates and the federal laws, we may lose our grants, and we may be prosecuted for certain violations, which I do not want to take that chance. We have too much to lose. Doesn't mean we're not pushing back against ICE. Our councilwoman has said we've been to other congressional office holders and asked them for a list of people who have been picked up right here in our city. So don't tell me you heard this from somebody who's told somebody who heard it from somebody else. I want eyewitnesses to come right here in front of this dais and said you saw with your own eyes ICE picking up certain people. Short of that, we're going to have to depend on congressional representatives who is still seeking that information. So you have to have some patience, because that information hasn't come out in the last month. And we have been actively seeking that information. And when we have it, we will make it available publicly from this very dais. So those who would come here and lecture me and the rest of this council should be here the rest of this evening so they can hear us lecture you. That's only fair. Or stay at home and watch on our Channel 3. Or read on our very, very expert reporting that I've seen. One of it was Voice of OC. Thank you very much for writing up very important stories and getting the information and news out to people so we can all share and we can all learn. The second subject I want to address is OCEA and GGEL. They were here, and they spoke to this council. And what was their motto? Respect the crew that works for you. Well, I got news for you. The crew that works for you includes my city staff, our city staff, and this representative body. We don't just work for OCEA. We don't just work for GGEL. We work for every resident in this city, especially the taxpayers to which we are accountable to. Now, you can vote me out personally if you don't like my message, but you're going to have to hear it. You're going to respect this dais. And you're going to respect my staff, my finance department, my human resource department, and my negotiating team who has a mediation hearing with you this very Friday. And I wish you the best of luck. We have authorized them to negotiate terms of a labor contract. We did not direct them to negotiate terms of respect or dignity or honor. Those are unnegotiable. Don't come here and tell me to negotiate, negotiate respect and honor and dignity with you. That's not what's on the table. On the tables are clear and definite terms of a labor contract, which we believe should be in line with other cities in Orange County. We already have some of the best deals, some of the best terms. Everybody's not going to be happy. Everybody's going to walk away a little bit unhappy. And that is what success looks like in a collective bargaining, negotiated, contract, labor, not a dispute. Just terms that need to be worked out professionally. And we have professionals on our team to work with you. We offered you a deal before your contract even expired. That is a show of good faith. I am the one that called for mediation. Yes, put it on my head and vote me out if you'd like. There is absolutely nothing wrong with mediation. Now, I had another speaker who come from another city. Well, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't say that cities are interconnected, but I can't speak about the next city over. That's a contradiction, and it's ridiculous. When I was elected, I am an elected 24/7, and I swore to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I did not swear to defend any political entity or any political creed. I am a free spirit, and I will speak my conscience, and I will speak my mind and is protected political speech. And I welcome any complaint, any demand, to which our city attorney have answered satisfactorily and sufficiently. And I rest that matter. The last thing I want to leave you with is my parents, my culture, taught me, when you point a finger, three fingers point back at you. I don't point fingers at anybody. And I'm letting you know, when you point a finger, three fingers point back at you. Sleep easy with that tonight. I think I've spoken more than I have this whole year, so I yield my time.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman?
Yes, Mayor. First, I want to say congratulations to the Garden Grove PD for the great night out. That was amazing. So many people came. So for the residents that did not come, make sure you come next year, because there were many elder or adult was there that came from all this. elder or adult was there that came from all the city and they said they came here every year and that they walked with bags of stuff and prizes and so a lot of night prizes such as barbecue and bicycle and so many things. So people have fun, kids have fun. The nice thing is that you get to see all our policemen and women. Men at each booth showing you what they are doing for our city, showing their job. And also welcome you and let you see their work and let you test it, look at, you know, the forensic lab and different things. So it was a lot of fun and of course, you know, the mayor and other council was there and we had a blast seeing the demo with the SWAT team. After the event, I have people from all the city just like give compliment and asking Cindy, when we're gonna have the next? Oh, well, you have to wait until next year. So great job to our PD. And then I think they were very friendly and kids love it. So that was the great night and parents gave me great input and they just said they love our PD, which is great. Second, I want to say congratulations to Garden Grove Unified District for the two ribbon cutting. One was the Mathren Special Education Center. So I have support many of event for special needs student. And this is a perfect place for them. The center was remodelled, very nice, big and very modern. So hopefully, you know, the people out there, if you have the need, make sure that you contact the center. The second one is Rencho Alameda High School, the CTE. I talked about this in the past that how career path, you know, some people, they don't get the opportunity to get their, you know, bachelor degree, a master degree, but going, you know, for what they love to do. And during that time, I talked to a couple of people and two gentlemen told me that one electrician and one carpenter make more than a hundred thousand a year. So that is something that for the people out there. Having the student go to this program and get opportunity to learn their career skill, they would be able to make money, help their family and build their dream. So awesome opportunity for the student there. Next one, I want to say thanks to the community service part and recreation team for the camp grow. So I'm not so coincident, I kinda, I guess, stalking them or following them. So our staff did a great job. They had a summer camp for students. And each week they would take their students to go to different locations and I just happened to have the not not very far past and got to talk to them. The kid loved it. They love all the leaders. So I just want to say great job to our staff. Our staff was really having a lot of fun. I thought they was kinda high school, college student that volunteering, but actually they said, no, we are in, you know, Garden Grove City employees. So great job, you guys. Next, I want to say thanks to Lisa, Matt, Sean and especially to Juan Navarro. So I know that sometime when we have the council meeting, we bring up issue and we don't know, you know, we take action and sometimes it takes forever to take action and you don't know where it's gonna go. So I brought up about the traffic signal synchronization. So our staff actually took the time, give me opportunity to talk to our staff, Juan. And he were able to give me the reason why we have the issue with, you know, we talk, I'm talking about the traffic jam at Brokehurst and Freeway 22. And so this one was brought up by couples teacher from St. Columban School. So I brought that up, but I didn't know where I wanna go. But at this point, just so for the resident out there, our staff be working on that. And the main thing is with the Caltrain because, you know, we have to work with them. And for some reason, they did not want to work with us on the synchronization. So our staff reached out to TRITA. And they are helping us to set the meeting with Caltrain and hopefully we will, you know, fix the issue with traffic jam at that location. In the same token, there is another issue with the Caltrain relate to the the tunnel between Tras and Garden Grove Park. Now that you know everybody, the student coming back to school and that's where the student will walk from this side of the freeway to go to Bosac Grande. And after I got the email from our resident, I drove there. And it's really bad, but we know that our staff cannot do anything because belong to Caltrain. So we is working on this issue with them, but I pass the information back to our staff and our staff will take action from there. I have a chance to do participate in couple of community food drive. So thanks to Garden Grove High School for having the food drive a couple of days ago. And with the other two, I actually brought, you know, item that I could donate and also support and brought friend to come and help out. Even the event from morning to 2:00 PM, after 2:00 PM, there's two people driving up and giving item. So that was really nice to see the volunteer, the teacher and superintendent, Dr. Murphy and all the teachers who there waiting, welcome people and getting item. And right on that spot, they divide the item to all the school right away. So each school were able to get some to take home for their student. Next item is about this kinda relate to the homeless issue. We talked about the corner of Chapman and Gilbert. I know that one of our residents came here and talked about it all the time. So I talked to the woman club, woman civic club right there and also talked to a couple of youth group. We would love to do a maybe a community cleanup day there, but I passed information back to our staff already. Hopefully, our staff will be able to work with us and do something about that. You know, this relate to the complaint or from couple of residents. So kinda relate to that too. Couple of days ago, we received email from a resident relate to the coyote cat and pothole. So just one more time, if you see any of that issue, please make sure you use the Garden Grove app. That way you could take the picture and post it and, you know, report and our city staff will be able to take action. So after I got the email, I finished my work. I drove to every single little street that they complained and took the picture, but it was not as it was say in the email. But by coincidence, when I went to that neighborhood, I met the resident, the person that reported. And we did have a talk, but just as a message to the resident, if you see anything like that, you welcome to report with the Garden Grove app. And she said that she didn't know or she knew, but she didn't know how to use it. So just a message to the, to the resident out there. Just want to say congratulations to Open Bank Garden Grove branch. They have the grand opening a couple of days ago and thank to Matt that came and helped kinda represent our city. And that was in my district. So it was a great great event in terms of seeing a lot of all the official people and also the businesses came to support, including the Chamber of Commerce. So today, we have two big group of people here to talk about two different issue. So the first one, I did want to say thanks to Omar for, and of course, council member Ariana to explain to our resident about, you know, what we can do and we cannot. I know and I agree with council member Chodo in relate that we don't talk, but we actually have thing that we, we do in the back. We don't have to tell people about that. For me, I have to find the fact. I have to find what is the rule, what the law, the regulation. So thank you to Omar and Ariana for having that session earlier. And with the negotiation. Because go to the negotiation, so I don't want to talk too much about that. But when I see the employees, yes, I see them in many of the time when they do the public work, cleanup, doing the road, I come say hi, bring there some water or treat them something, a little snack or something. So I look at them as a family, part of the Garden Grove family, even when I saw them earlier. Going to negotiations, they a tough time, very. So I just want, I hope that by this Friday, when the staff and, you know, our, our staff and the union sit down together, have open mind and I trust that you would be able to look at what's the best interest for both sides and come up with the agreement so that everyone will be kinda win-win, like happy and get done with this. And last but not least, there will be a cultural heritage festival at Miles Square Park by our supervisor Janet Nguyen from August fifteen to seventeen. So come, it's free, so everybody is invited and so come and we will be there. That's it for me, sir.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Actually, tonight to me is a very sensitive night. We have a lot of people coming here, express their feeling and most of the main issue that actually involve all of us and to me most of the thing, my college already went through and talked about it, so I don't wanna repeat it. I concur. In short term, I just want to say about homeless immigration, I got two issues that we all been working on it. We're not ignoring it. We working on it endlessly. And we are as frustrated as you. Nevertheless, we will continue to work on it. Be patient. We hear you. In the same time, we have to work with the city budget. And we have to comply with the state and the federal law. Then with that, I just want to get a few advertising for the next few event. Maybe is fresher. That I want to repeat about the Cultural Heritage Festival that Cindy just talked about. It's a, it's a fifty years of the Vietnamese American journey. It's on August fifteen to seventeen. Over there, we can honor the past, celebrate the present and empower the future. It's at Freedom Hall at Miles Square Park. We have live performance, we have music, we have carnival, ride, game, cultural food, historical exhibit. And you can contact at ocfestival.org or at the phone number at seven one four eight three four three one one zero. About the small business. We, I want to invite you all come to the ribbon cutting celebration grand opening of the Thursday Korean barbecue cow.
Thursday cow.
Thursday cow. All right. And on Friday, August fifteen, two thousand twenty-five at four PM. The address is five nine three nine Chapman Avenue, Main Street. Garden Grove, California, nine two eight four five. Please come and join us. You know, small business is important to us. Yeah, Chapman Avenue. That's it for now. Thank you.
Well, I just want to start off, Garden Grove Kiwanis is giving five hundred dollar scholarships to Garden Grove Unified School teachers. How's that for one of our great civic clubs in the city? So you know, these teachers have to come up with all this stuff for their classrooms throughout the year and I just think that's just a wonderful way to help, help out the teachers and so if you know any Garden Grove Unified School teachers, please have them go to the Kiwanis website or they can go to my Facebook. I've actually got the flyer on my, on my social media there and they can open up the link and, and apply. So just want to give a shout out to Garden Grove Kiwanis for, for doing that. Again, our Garden Grove Employees Association. I think Councilman Do Vin was pretty eloquent with, with his remarks. We totally, everyone on this dais, we, if anyone sees your work every day and hears about what good you do for uh, it's us. We, we hear it. We respect you. We, 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 we appreciate the hard work. And we've given staff direction to, to conscientiously negotiate. So I, I hope you guys could come to a successful resolution. Please know that the community does appreciate your work and this dais appreciate your work as well. So getting on to my last issue, I was speaking to the mayor on the phone last week and I don't know if it was her idea, but we were kinda brainstorming about all the years of, you know, complaints we've heard from people in regard to transparency with the council. And you know, things like, you know, I get this thing and it, it doesn't have an address on it. It just has a number. Or, you know, what's T O T F A R B E H K L, you know, people read this stuff. They don't know. And, you know, or, or it's in such industry speak that the average person doesn't understand or comprehend what the notice is saying. So I, I don't know. I think it might've been the mayor's idea, but I kinda ran with it. And, you know, we should have an ordinance that addresses this stuff, the, the transparency with the community. You know, when you get a letter, who did, who sent me this? Who, who, where did, you know, you should have a name at the bottom. Somebody sign it. Or, you know, so I know who to call. There should be a telephone number that I can call and inquire, that, you know, just these routine things. So I, I'm gonna be working with staff to kinda fine tune a document that I hope we can all you know, like, and I really, really want input for the rest of the council. I'm gonna send this off to Omar here probably tomorrow, my initial draft. And, you know, if there's anything that you've heard from your constituents that you would like included in regards to transparency, and I know Joe, you've been around a long time planning committee, you've probably got some good insight. Please email, email Omar. And we'll make sure that, that we incorporate those ideas into the transparency ordinance. I, I just think, you know, it's been decades in the making and and I was talking to the mayor and she's going, we heard this same issue twenty years ago. Yeah, we heard this thirty years ago, same. There should be an ordinance that addresses this. It shouldn't have to keep coming up year after year and council after council. There should be something that addresses this. So I just wanted to let you know, to look forward to that, but I really, really, I know last time I was doing this stuff with the trees, I didn't get hardly any input and I really appreciate if you guys any kind of complaints that you hear from people, let's fix it now. So we don't have to hear it again ten years from now, five years from now, you know. Let's, and you just have a, you know, in, in hopes for a more transparent government for our community. So I'm just gonna let you know, we're, we're working on that. And there was one other thing, but I forgot. Getting old and senile. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I appreciate you taking the ball and running with that. Transparency is always important. I think it's something that we all stand by and appreciate and that was important to the community and if we're sending notices or letters and if we're sending notices or letters and there's a way to make it just more digestible and, and help the community better understand. It just, it just helps with our good faith and just the commitment to the, the community. So thank you for that. We look forward to it. Obviously, a lot of events, ribbon cuttings and restaurant grand openings and walk and talks and national night out and supporting the school district. We've been very busy, which is a good thing. So a lot of events to, to celebrate and to highlight tonight and I appreciate everyone doing that. Just one last thing, I love when we have residents in the city of Garden Grove that turn a hundred years old. It's a big deal. My husband's grandmother just turned a hundred, coincidentally, over this weekend. So, but I have another a hundred year old birthday that I want to make mention of. I had a former Garden Grove City employee, Mr. Richard Williams, reached out to me and mentioned that his mother-in-law, Jolene Beck, had turned a hundred. And so I just wanted to read a little bit about her. She's a Garden Grove resident for over sixty years. She raised six kids here and has extensive family tree, including a brother that is a hundred and two. So we got some good genes there and siblings in their nineties, twelve grandkids and nine great-grandkids. She was born on a corn farm in rural Minnesota and she can still tell stories from the Great Depression through every decade of her life. After her first husband passed, she remarried at eighty and proved that you can still find love at any age. Yes, yes. She even competed in the Senior Olympics and, and clinched some medals in lawn bowling in her eighties and nineties, inspiring other seniors in their sixties and seventies to keep going, showing them that there is still so much more to life. So I want to wish her a happy hundredth birthday and I'll be getting a certificate to her so that she can continue her celebrations. So with that, we'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I cannot follow that, but I don't have anything to report out. Thank you. City Attorney Sandoval.
Yes, Mayor. We did have a closed session earlier this evening and there's no reportable action out of that and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.